And welcome to the Monday, August 18th, 2014, Long Meadow Select Board Meeting. We'll start with the pledge allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a couple of announcements tonight. One of them deals with the political signs. Marie reminded me that the political signs cannot be put in the tree-belt area, and if you do not have a sidewalk in front of your house, they have to be back beyond the right-of-way. So can't put them out at the roadside, pull them back. Now, if by chance they're out there and somebody picks them up, there's a dumpster down near the fire station and police barracks, and you'll find them stacked behind that dumpster. So that's a depository for signs that are picked up in our community. The second announcement was from, given to me by Stephen, and he said the meeting Monday, Select Board members mentioned the last day to register to vote or change party affiliation is on Wednesday, August 20th of this year. The registrar's office will be open until 8:00 PM that evening. So that is August 20th, and she's open till 8:00 PM. Resident comments? Seen no resident comments. Select Board comments? Boy, this meeting's gonna go fast. Seen no Select Board comments. Town manager report?
Thanks, Richard. Briefly, I think it was announced that Emily Perkins has given her resignation. That was announced at the last meeting, okay. Just wanted, for those who, I assume everyone has gotten the message, but we have, our water ban has been lifted, normal water service has been restored to the town. Appreciate everybody's patience with that. It was quite a situation, a 60-inch water main, if you can imagine the pressure and the volume on a, you know, almost a five-foot, you know, main line. It was something that obviously the Water and Sewer Committee, the Water Commission from Springfield felt very serious about. So we got through it, and I appreciate everybody's patience. The progress on our road projects is going very well. I think all the underground work on the Colton Place sewer installation has been completed. Laurel Street, which is a project from last year, all that underground work has been completed, and they have patched what they call shimming the roadway, and that is trying to bring it up to as close to a level grade as possible. It is a pre-paving step. The process is they fill in the trench and some, and the areas that were cut during the construction, and then they let it settle over the winter. So after, when they go back out in the springtime, they'll mill and overlay the entire road, and it'll be essentially a new road surface, similar to what was done this year on Merryweather and Williams, and it makes the road turn out better and reduces the opportunity for dips in the road after settling. Dwight Road is also ongoing, a big drainage project out there, and that'll also similarly be shimmed at the end of the project and then repaved, and that's obviously a much-needed project out there. I won't go through all the list of projects, you have them in my report. I do have, I don't know if it's on the agenda separate right here. I do have Chief Bob Siano here. I know, Richard, if you want to do the announcement.
No, go ahead.
Yeah, okay. So I ask Bob to step forward. He has an announcement for the residents with regard to break-ins that have been happening in vehicles throughout the town.
Well, our town's really no different than some of the surrounding towns. There's been a big rash of car breaks. Since August 1st, we've documented 52 entries into motor vehicles, not all of which got reported to us. A lot of people find their car broken into and not finding anything missing, they don't bother to call us, but then when they talk to a neighbor that's lost something, then they decide to call. Sometimes it's a week or so later, so.
I'm sorry, how many was it, break-ins?
Fifty-two.
Over what period?
Since August 1st till now. Since Friday, this past Friday, August 15th, there's been 32 entries into motor vehicles. Twenty-nine of them occurred on Friday alone. All of the vehicles entered have been unlocked, with valuables left inside, and several instances, the officers arrived and found garage doors open all night. There's been bicycles that have been stolen. Most of the breaks have occurred during the overnight hours between 1:00 and 5:00 AM. Most of the car breaks, although not all of them, have been in the northeast section of town, Pine Wood, Tanglewood, Blueberry, Converse Street areas. However, we have had them in other areas also. In several cases, bicycles have been stolen from open garages or bikes that have been left outside, and the midnight shift knows that the perpetrators used those to write off because they can see the tracks in the wet grass. So they're using bicycles as transportation, at least in the short term. Some of the bikes have been recovered at other car breaks. We've increased overnight patrols in the areas, and we are also taking other steps to try to mitigate the car breaks. But bottom line is, don't leave valuables in the car, and don't leave your cars unlocked. That's the biggest thing. We've been saying that right along. I know it's, Hope has put it in the Long Meadow News, we've got it on our webpage. I don't know how much more we can do other than to say, you know, if you're gonna leave your car unlocked with valuables in it, you're just taking a chance that it's a target of opportunity, somebody's gonna steal it, so. Again, lock the cars, close your garage doors, don't leave the bikes outside. If you believe your car's been entered, even if you don't think anything has been stolen, please contact the police department, and our business line, 567-3311. And if you hear or see anything or anyone suspicious, call the station at the time that you hear or see it. Don't wait till the next day. Last weekend, the midnight shift observed two individuals running across William Street, all wearing dark clothing, but they disappeared into the night, they never found them. They attempted to get a K-9 to come out to help search for them. By the time the K-9 from the state police arrived, they were nowhere to be found, so. We're working on some leads now, on items that were stolen that surfaced in Springfield, so. That's about it, as far as the car breaks.
Any comments?
Have you been, has anybody in touch with Springfield PD?
Yes.
Okay. I mean, my sense of these types of cases is intelligence, you know, and confidential informants and that sort of thing might be helpful. I mean, is that, are we a member of any task forces, regional task forces, where we'd be sharing information?
We do.
What task?
I'm not gonna get into specifics on what we're doing and how we're doing it.
No, and I don't want you to, but.
Right. We have a regional meeting once a month with all the investigators from the area, whether it be state, local, or federal, every Wednesday, the third Wednesday of every month. We've been doing that for the last about 10 to 12 years, so. Everybody shares information, pictures, et cetera, so. There's been some good arrests from information sharing that way.
Do we do anything else? I mean, that's what I mean by task, I mean, like, you know what I mean by task force, where officers actually work with.
In other jurisdictions.
Well, work with officers in other jurisdictions on long-term investigations. Do we do anything like that?
We have a drug task force that we do, but that's about it.
And who are we partnering with on the drug task force?
Southwick, Palmer, Ludlow, Wilberham, Hamden. I believe West Springfield's in it.
And how many officers are detailed to that?
Just one, and it's not full-time. We don't have the personnel to do that.
Right. What percentage of that officer's time is to that task?
I really couldn't tell you.
Okay.
Chief, first of all, thank you for coming out.
You're welcome.
I think it's a valuable thing for the residents to see the chief of police voice opinions to the community. I'm shocked at how many break-ins you're getting, I didn't know the count had got that great. By the way, they were on Captain Road at one time, too, so. So far, no one is engaged, these people, no one's seen them in the act?
No.
And of course, I would imagine you're recommending that if we see anything, do not engage.
Correct. Call the station.
Because right now, it stayed as a crime of opportunity, but could escalate, we don't, no idea where it could go.
That's correct.
Okay, again, thank you for coming out. Stephen, I appreciate you bringing the chief in so he could let the community bring him up to speed on where we're at, and you're right, right now, it's a simple thing. Shut your doors, lock them, take the valuables out of sight, and put them in your house. How about increased lighting? Any deterrence to increasing your outside lighting?
You know, a lot of people have motion lights, but these folks aren't deterred by the motion lights because they know there's nobody around to see them.
Yeah.
And they're all dressed in dark clothing, so.
And the hours are, it's the wee hours of the morning that this is all happening.
Yeah, usually between 1:00 AM and 5:00 AM, so, during darkness hours, when most people are not around. The newspaper delivery person pulled into a driveway on Ardsley Road just the other night to drop a newspaper, and when the car lights turned into the driveway, they saw somebody bolt away from a car, and they disappeared in the woods.
Yeah.
We never found them, so.
Right.
And that was about 3:00 o'clock in the morning.
Paul, you have something?
Well, there's an agenda item under New Business about the mutual aid agreement for police departments. Is the chief gonna stay for that, or can we ask a question now?
Well, he'll stay for that.
Okay, that's fine, I just wanted to.
And I do have two more announcements. The first is, while he's sitting there.
Actually, if I could just, I mean, I guess, I mean, I agree, you know, we should be vigilant. Residents should be vigilant, but, you know, this, you know, we also have to try to get the bad guys, and I know you're trying to do that. I just, I hope that the message that's not being conveyed by the town is to blame the victims. You know, I used to live in Washington DC, and, you know, we were supposed to be vigilant there. Well, vigilant there meant putting bars on your window, and our house was still broken into. And so then you put bars on your windows, and you put a club on your car, and you get a security system for your house. I mean, the thing is, you know, once these thieves and burglars start taking root, you know, they start defeating, you know, even the.
That's correct.
Measures that you take. So it can't just be solved by the victims. So I just hope that the message isn't conveyed that we're just blaming them and.
And believe me, that's not the message that I'm trying to convey.
Okay.
I'm just trying to let the people know that if you leave your cars open with valuables in it, you have a good chance of losing something. We can't be everywhere all the time. So I think it's just, it's common sense that if you have some expensive equipment, don't leave it in the wide open during the night in an unlocked vehicle. That's all I'm suggesting.
Right.
Okay, and thank you, chief.
You're welcome.
Can I just say one thing while you're chief?
Sure.
If you don't mind.
Sure.
You know, my daughter's car had gotten hit because she had an alarm that would go off, so her door was unlocked, and that was early summer. And I just want to say, because, you know, her door had to be unlocked because the alarm was going off, and it was either have her alarm go off in the middle of the night or not. But, and the only thing, they were very discerning because they took her a very nice pair of sunglasses, which she was really upset about. But what I want to say is that when we did find out what happened, we called the police department. Detective came out, we had a patrolman come out. They took the one item, which was the sunglass case, and unfortunately, we had to move cars to get my son to school, so I hadn't disturbed the scene, so to speak.
Right.
But I just wanted to say that even though it happened, the professionalism of the department was fantastic, and.
Thank you.
Your detective took our item, talked to us about what the process was, they bagged it for fingerprints, and then your patrolmen went around and they had them knock on other doors to see if anybody else had been hit. So they didn't just come, and, so I understand what you're saying, Alex, I just want to say, though, on the flip side of it, when it does happen, they're there.
Correct.
And they do a great job, so I just wanted to say that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Marie?
Just trying to jump in with one thing. Something you said I thought was very interesting, and that's that you looked for a K-9 unit to come in, and you, there was a delay before the K-9 unit could come into our facility, our town. Do you feel having a K-9 unit would help in these type of instances?
It couldn't hurt, let's just put it that way. I mean, especially if the K-9 unit was immediately available. I mean, when we have to call state police, they might be tied up on something else, you know. They call around and see if they can get the nearest K-9, and sometimes even state police, they, you know, they come from the Worcester area.
Well, other towns that do have K-9 units, have they used them effectively, or you haven't looked into that?
They have.
For this type of break-ins?
They have. Especially when you see somebody running away from a scene, that's the best time to have one available.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So just two more things quickly while he's sitting there. We did receive a $100,000 grant from the state E-911 Department to help us advance the study of a possible shared dispatch center, or regional emergency communication center, or REC, R-E-C-C. And so that, those funds will be used to help, like I said, further analyze the sighting requirements, technological requirements, you know, it's to bring in some professional expertise to come help us do that. So I want to commend the chief and his colleagues in the other towns, as well as the team of the department for writing a strong application and getting those funds in, and I look forward to reporting the progress on that grant in the future. And then the, and it just occurred to me to.
Could I interject a question on that last point?
Sure.
Yeah, sure. I saw the letter, or memo, about the regional dispatch center, and I guess the question I had was, we're getting $100,000 for, I guess, the study of it. How much of, I mean, I guess the question sort of came to my mind, how much, how far does that push us along toward the ultimate goal? I mean, you know, is there?
On a percentage basis?
Is there some expectation on the people who are giving us that amount of money that we're gonna follow through on it?
I think there's, the commitment by the towns involved are to see if this'll work. I mean, there are complications that are, you know, topographical, technological, you know, that we're appropriate site, so there are a lot of questions you have to answer in a very detailed way before you know that this is going to work, but the expectation is we are advancing towards the establishment of a REC, yes.
But I mean, usually people don't give $100,000 because they think it's unlikely that we're not gonna do it.
Right.
And I guess, let's say we decide not to do it, for whatever reason, because that decision hasn't been made. I mean, will we have sort of broken the grant in some way, or do the people who gave us the grant understand that it could be for naught?
It could be for naught, I think they understand that. I think the state is prioritizing its funding of technology for dispatch centers, and it's, and how they support the development of dispatch, or the evolution of dispatch, in a way that it's pushing communities to do this. And so I think it's become clear to at least the parties that have been in the discussions with the state so far, that this is really the next path for municipalities across the state. Maybe not everybody, but certainly ones that really have the right fit. So like I said, I, you're right, does this guarantee that we're gonna do it? No, it does not, but it, like I said, the expectation is we are pursuing this as an option, and if we don't, the state is, you know, the state isn't gonna continue to fund technological, technology purchases and things like that, like they have in the past, so.
To draw everybody's attention to what was in our packets, it said what the grant actually would provide.
And I don't, haven't seen the grant agreement.
Right.
Alex, to sort of say, we have to pay back the money if we don't do one of these, I don't know if the grant agreement says that.
I don't know.
But I would doubt it, but, like I said, it's.
I guess for the public, though, the grant paperwork says, "Conduct an analysis of site locations, schematic building, design, and construction costs. Perform an analysis and review of staffing structure, personnel costs, and governance, and provide a comprehensive technological cost assessment. A detailed study, including recommendations, will be submitted to the board in the spring of 2015." So this is what they call seed money. This is to see whether it's a go or no-go, it's not for the final, it's a seed program.
Yeah, what would it look like?
Yeah, what would it look like, and with this money, then they'll be able to, then you'll be able to go back for the big bucks to get it put in.
Yes.
Okay.
Exactly. And then the last announcement I have is, we've had some reports of bats in people's homes, and the one announcement I have for folks is that if you get, you know, bats are carriers of rabies, and if you get a bat in your home, and you're able to hit it with a tennis racket, or however you subdue the thing, some, there are companies out there that come do it, they give you the option of keeping the bat. If you keep it, if the bat was in the house, in rooms where people were sleeping or were present, it's really important that you keep the bat. Contact our health department, and they will, Beverly Hurst Run will take responsibility for packaging it and shipping it to Boston to be tested for rabies. The alternative is that everyone in the house has to go to the emergency room to get several shots for rabies, of rabies vaccines, which is painful and unfortunate, and nobody wants to go through that, so it's really important. If you get a bat in your house, and it was, like, if it's up in the crawl space and no one's been up there, you know, that's one thing, but if it was in the house, everyone should keep the bat, get in touch with our board of health, and we will ship it to Boston to be tested.
That it, Stephen?
That's it.
Question?
Yeah, I just have a question. And the DPW report, Stephen, that you submitted, talked about Colton Place and Dwight Road projects, and in each of those cases, the bid price was higher than the amount of money that was authorized at town meeting, and I know that on the, later in, another report talked about Dwight Road, explaining why the higher cost, because we rolled more things into it, and did it, but the question is, how are we going to cover that, those additional funds?
I do have a report on that, that's in draft form, and the town engineer who prepared the report was away, so that should be in the next packet. But I do have a report on that in detail for all the projects, including the tennis courts and everything else. Tennis courts has a bid opening on the 27th of August for what it's worth.
But these are projects that we're, well, we've awarded the bids, and I guess the question I have, and I don't know if it's a rhetorical question or a real question, is, you know, we make our best guesses, and of course, we beat up on you when we estimate much higher than the bids come in, and like what happened on Laurel and Merryweather, you know, and Woodside Drainage, but on the other hand, when they come in higher than the bids, we have this small fund that allows for overages, but, you know, I'm not sure how we handle it otherwise. I mean, is there any generalizations you want to give me, or is this?
I could make a generalization, I could make a generalization, but I'm developing a specific answer for the next Select Board packet, and it'll be, and I will also know more about the, quite frankly, it's worth having the Belin tennis court information in there as well, so I will be submitting a report on that.
Okay.
But we have the questions answered, I just don't have it in front of me.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Marie?
I had a question on one of the town managers' reports you put in. And again, we're seeing recycling seems to be dropping, and I don't know what the numbers were, it was like our glass and plastic recycling was dropped like 22%, and our trash collection costs went up 25%. I'm not sure if they're related, it would seem to be they are. Is there anything that you're recommending, or maybe the recycling commission, to try to bring those costs down? Because what concerns me is I know, was it the Springtown meeting, we had to transfer substantial money to cover, and if we're still going in that direction, I'm a little worried about it.
Okay.
Maybe the next meeting, if you could come up with some ideas.
Well, overall, starting on July 1st, our trash costs should go down significantly because we negotiated a, we negotiate on a regional basis, even though we signed as an individual community, and got a much better disposal fee. But that may be something that we may want to have the recycling commission come here and discuss with the board.
Yeah, I just, I could, Marie, I just was wondering what the date was, Marie, because I, I actually, the graph that you gave us, I mean, he's got 2014, we've got so far one point in 2015, and our, you know, our trash is up, and our recycling for paper is up 10%, and our recycling for metal and plastic is down 10%, but that's only one data point. I've actually gone back, compared to previous years, and it's not that, it doesn't seem to me to be.
You didn't see the bump up?
Not when I, and that's, and just so, I sent Stephen on, just a note that maybe we could, and I did that chart year over year to look at these things, so we can see that kind of like we do with the water. So, but I think you'll find that it's not that.
That is drastic.
It's not that drastic, and with the tipping fees, which is, the collection fees go up, this is the last year of our five-year contract, but the tipping fees, this is the first year of a new contract, and tipping fees have gone down substantially this year.
All right. We threw a town manager's report. Everybody done?
I am, if you are.
You okay? Okay, thank you, Stephen. Next item, block party approvals, we have four of them.
Yes, can I ask that we remove the Knollwood request from the consent agenda? It'll be obvious when we, after we remove it, because I want to discuss it.
I wonder, does that, that doesn't take a vote, yeah, so remove.
Okay, so I'd like to approve the consent agenda for, on block parties as, I guess it's the consent agenda for block parties and the state primary award.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
There's no discussion.
That's right, there isn't, thank you. We usually don't get to anything like that.
That's the idea of a consent agenda.
It's already been discussed and agreed to, okay, all in favor, aye. Thank you, Marie.
At this point, though, I'd like to just.
I'm opposed.
Okay.
This was everything but Knollwood.
Everything but Knollwood.
Okay, so it's 5-0?
No, 4-1.
4-1.
And the reason I'm voting against is, we put an election warrant in the consent agenda, which is wrong. That election warrant should be presented to the Select Board based on the recommendation of the town clerk, and the vote should be separate out of a consent. A consent agenda, there's things that are perfunctory, and I know an election typically, technically is perfunctory, but it is an important issue, and if there's any problems with it, we have no record of who recommended that to us, it's not in the packet as to who recommended that, we vote on that particular warrant, and that's why I voted against it.
So it's for all the block parties and the state primary warrant?
All the block parties minus Knollwood. And Mr., Mr. Santinello's objections are so noted, and we'll take care of that next time around.
So I'd like to, for purpose of discussion, I'd like to make a motion to approve the block party on Knollwood Road.
Second.
My, the purpose of my.
Discussion now.
Discussion, right.
Okay.
The purpose of my pulling it out of the consent agenda is, I've been doing this now for five years and approving block parties, and I think this is the first one that's been on town, on school property, I shouldn't say town property, they're mostly on the street, which is, which is town property. I'm just wondering if having a block party on school property has any different implications to the town, as opposed to letting a block off the street and do it on the street, and never having seen it, I'd like a discussion to see if anybody else even sees that as a concern.
The only issue is alcohol. You cannot consume alcohol on town property. So if they don't have alcohol, they're, and they got approval, they got approval. I'm assuming that it means they got, with Tom Maz's name in there, that they got approval from the schools. I'm assuming that, which is a big assumption, but I'm, I don't. That's the only issue you need to, I think that we would need to worry about, is that bylaws, our bylaw says that alcohol cannot be consumed on town property.
I don't know if there's an absolute ban on consuming alcohol on town property. I think we went through this before, a few years ago.
It's a bylaw, and we make an exception to that bylaw every time we, or, maybe it's a policy of the board, but, I don't think it's a policy of the board, I don't, you can't have an open container in a park, can we?
Open container, no, there is a bylaw about open containers.
It's in the parks, town property, it's no different than a school or anything else, I would imagine. So my only concern is that it's, if there's alcohol, I mean, if they're not gonna have alcohol, then it's not a big deal, but.
It would be a commensurate one-day liquor license, I would guess, if they're having alcohol. So you, I would agree with you, I think, if there's no liquor license application, there should not be alcohol there at all.
Any other discussion?
No, this is the one who made it, I'm just giving you points of information.
Come on.
No, I just, like I said, I had never seen a block party being held on school grounds before, and that was my only point.
It is grounds, but it's asphalt surface, is what they're saying, they're just in the parking lot.
Well, yeah, I get it, but it's, mostly it's in a road, not on the school, that's all.
Right, it's a straight shot.
I'm also gonna take a shot and say that Knollwood does not have an exit, it's a dead end.
Right.
And maybe that's why it's on the school property versus the street, so people on the street can get up and down. the street can get up and down without.
That's probably right.
I'm just, I'm, again, another assumption which.
No, but fine, I, I'm not, I'm not opposed to it, I just wanted to discuss it, that's good.
Okay, all in favor?
All right.
All opposed? Okay.
Can I, before we, we go on, can, can we just maybe follow up and make sure the residents understand that if they're on school property, that perhaps they can't have alcohol, and that we don't want someone to get into trouble, because we approved a block, block party permit, and then I don't, I would not like it to have tacit approval or implied approval that it means that, you know, because I don't want, I, I just don't want to see something happen where someone has a beer and they say, wait a minute, we got a block party approved, you guys knew what was going on. Maybe there should be some communication there that we just let folks know what's going on.
Yeah. Sorry, I mean, just to clarify, if you're going to have a party, whether it's on school grounds, or any place, or a block party, or any other type of thing, and you're going to serve alcohol, you need a one-day liquor license.
Okay.
I'd be interested to get clarification, maybe from our attorney, if alcohol is absolutely forbidden in all town buildings.
Well, I know, I know you can get, you can do it at a, a community house, if you wanted to have a wedding, a community house to serve alcohol, you can't do that, so I don't.
With a, with a one-day liquor license.
With a one-day, with a one-day liquor license, right. So I don't, it's not, I said, I know, it's not an absolute ban, you need a one-day liquor license if you're going to do it, but the town does have certain provisions for, in certain locations, having, allowing for, with a liquor license, alcohol, so I, like, we, I think we went through this last year, but we can clarify the policy.
And we do have the open container law, which is an effect on this, because this is public property. So it's, it's, it's covered. Because they, I don't think anybody intends to serve, but if somebody brought their own, it's still a violation, on, if they're on the school grounds or the public street.
That's correct.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions, Paul?
No, that's fine.
Okay.
So for the consent agenda, I have two different motions. One for Nowood, and then one for the other.
Right, and this, this was pulled off, and this was, uh, brought under separate, so it was, uh, we just voted on it.
Okay, so it's just two different motions?
Right. Okay, approval of minutes for July 21st, 2014, regular meeting.
I move that we approve the minutes from the July 21st, 2014, regular session, select board meeting.
Second?
I'll second the motion, but I have some corrections I'd like to submit.
Okay, discussion?
Yeah, I have sent these to, I think I, I actually sent them to Rebecca over, over the weekend, just because I was going to promote them. Uh, there's a, there's a section here, let me try to find it, on, uh, Town Manager Reports, item seven, it says that council on aging is offered to donate, it's actually Faloka, offered to donate funds to enhance the Greenwood, Greenwood Center, so that, that change, I would, I would suggest, because the council on aging didn't. And also that, uh, the project on Colton Place requires the street be closed and not, uh, project would be clo- that the street would be closed, and, uh, I think I had one other. One other correction, uh, the, down near the bottom, when it talked about, uh, Eastham Lane license, I, there's a, uh, it said the fee ownership, and I don't think there's a fee, it's just the ownership would, would stay, so I deleted the word fee from there. I think, right, I sent that to you.
Where are you on that?
When we're talking about Eastham Lane, I'm sorry.
Which?
It's paragraph, it, it's listed just above New Business, I think it's paragraph five. It says, Mr. Crane noted the wall did not exist on town land. Attorney Martel noted if the town accepted the road as a public way, the fee ownership would stay with the owners, and I think it just means the ownership would stay with the owners.
It means that even if, even if it then became part of the right-of-way, the fee ownership of the land, um.
What is the fee ownership?
Meaning it's a, basically, everyone owns the center line of, of the streets, and then the town, towns, everywhere in Massachusetts retain in Eastman over the land.
So is it ownership?
Yeah, it doesn't really make much of a difference one way or the other.
Yeah, I mean, I don't remember him specifically addressing this, but fee, the, in, in property law, that, that is a concept of fee simple, and, and it's a, it's a word that does connote ownership, but I don't remember exactly what he said about it.
You want to leave it in, leave it in, I just, obviously didn't understand it, so. And, and also that there were some questions about the, the, in, in the paragraph about the Long Metal Shops presentation, I think there were some things that were, I both recalled differently and didn't indicate that what I thought it was, and, and down the paragraph says, Mr. Whitner noted there were several retailers who wanted to be included in Long Metal Shops, however, with 100 percent residency, the Long Metal Shops, I think it should say occupancy instead of residency.
Occupancy.
Yeah, it said the Long Metal Shops area need to expand, I would rather it said, the Long Metal Shops area would need to expand to accommodate additional retailers, I suggested we add that. Mr. Whitner noted the area in Long Metal Shops is zoned as residential, it's not the, the, it should be the, the area adjacent to the Long Metal Shops, or the Long Metal Shops wanted to expand, the area the Long Metal Shops wanted to expand into was zoned residential, because the Long Metal Shops is not zoned residential. Uh, so I had submitted that, and finally, the select board would, uh, further propose it to the planning board, said Mr. Gold noted there was a desire to mitigate, and I'd rather state that, Mr. Gold noted that the recent negotiation over the proposed Springfield Casino were based on a desire to mitigate traffic, and, and the area was, and, and asked if the traffic was prepared to handle, and I would add the increase in traffic. Anyway, I submitted those proposed suggestions primarily for clarification. I don't know if you got, you saw the email with the.
Did you send it to me?
I sent it to whatever you gave me, the, the same 008 one.
No, it's the other one. I haven't, I don't want to open up that one.
Oh, okay, well, I don't know what your email address is, I'll send it to Debbie House, she'll send it to you. You'll, with those corrections.
Any other comment?
Did we approve the other block parties?
Yeah, that was, those were part of the consent agenda.
Yeah, I was making a note, okay.
I'm still hung up on the consent agenda, so don't worry, Stephen.
Sorry.
All in favor in the minutes?
I.
All opposed?
With the changes.
With the changes.
Yeah, with the changes?
And I abstain, I was not there.
Okay. All right. The town property naming policy, this issue came up last, uh, last meeting, and I was not available last meeting. I'm going to draw on the memory of the guys that were here. Was it modified and brought back?
I don't think we dealt with it.
There's some questions, where according to Paul Pesterzic, who was in my place at that meeting, there were questions about what was motivating it, um, clarifying what the impact would be, and so Paul at least advised me that it would be better if I was here to kind of answer some of those kind of background questions.
Okay.
Go ahead.
I, I was just going to say, the, my recollection was there were some concerns about it, and, uh, you know, what we've got now is exactly what we had, I mean, there were no modifications made to it. I know at the time I expressed the concern, whether it was the select board's role to do this, or in fact, this ought to be modified to require it to be at a town meeting, and I remember those, making those comments at the, the time, you know, should naming of a building or naming of something be a town meeting decision as opposed to just the select board, i.e., whose authority it is, is it to name town property like, like that?
Right.
And is it us, which, it's like, that could be, could be possible, but I think it, I thought it was more proper to be by the town meeting.
Do we want, do we want to get the, a motion on approved, so we can get this under discussion then, or?
Not, I wouldn't approve it in that form, I'm not even, as a first-time group.
For discussion, and we, or we, it stood as voted down then at the last meeting?
No, it wasn't, it wasn't voted upon.
Wasn't having brought up?
We had quite, because basically, I had asked Paul Pesterzic, there's got to be a genesis for this, that we haven't had this come before the board, so, um, Paul said he thought there might be something in the works, but he didn't want to answer anything because he wasn't sure, so, um, for us to have a town naming policy, someone obviously wants to name something in the town, or if it come before the board. I mean, I doubt that we're bringing this up, just because it might be nice to add something to the policy book that we have, but, so my question is, what's the genesis of this? What's, what's driving this in front of the select board to have us come up with a naming policy?
Yeah, Marie?
My memory was the year before, when we were talking about the media center, down in the over 60 room, there was a discussion on the select board on what is the naming policy in town, and we didn't have one, and that's what I thought the genesis was.
There was that, and actually, Paul, I think, I recall you being the one that asked for it, when we had gotten word that, uh, like, the, one of the baseball associations we're going to name, wanted to name one of the baseball fields that our town owned. And we said, how do we, I think you asked the question, how do we, how do we name things? And do we have a policy? And, and it turns out, it turns out that we don't. There isn't like, uh, another shoe that's going to drop on this one, where as soon as you approve this, next week, somebody's going to bring in a, request to name something. That, it's not that I'm aware of, so there's not, it, it more was, you know, and it was a long time between the time you said we should have one and the time we brought it to you, but, um, I had gone through our Parks and Rec Director to kind of do some research on other communities. Uh, I do believe that the locally elected body, uh, whether it's a city council or a select board, uh, does have the authority to do this. I mean, the charter gives ownership of all town facilities to essentially the Department of Public Works, which is overseen by, um, town manager and the select board, so I know in the other cities I've worked, in Massachusetts, the city councils did have responsibility for naming things, so I, I mean, I think if the board wanted to propose a bylaw for town meeting where a town meeting vote was required, that's a choice, but I think most elected bodies, um, this was cribbed, like I said, from several examples, so to answer the questions, I, I do believe the select board could, if it chose, um, retain the, the, uh, ability to name properties with some guidelines, and there is no, um, specific proposal being put forward.
I, you, go ahead, Marie.
What, did you want me to put a motion on the floor so we can start discussion?
Well, that's what I had asked. I don't know where, what got this high-centered. First of all, I think, I think it's entirely appropriate to have a policy for naming, because it should be in place, or without it, you're going to have this debate all the time, and I don't know if there's been enough, and I'm not being negative, I don't know if there's been enough thought put into the policy to cover all the possible situations, but I don't know when you do get to that point either, because as soon as you think you have it, somebody dreams up a different angle. Um, I would like to, the flavor of the board apparently was not to take this issue up at last time, and I'm wondering that we can adopt a motion, and Maria, back, Marie, now, or we can go ahead and give this to you and Alex as your subcommittee and make a report back, seriously, back at our next meeting with, with a, with a motion to bring this before the board.
Whichever you prefer, Chair. I'd be glad to do it if you feel it would be.
I, I find there's discomfort with this current thing, so why don't we put it off for two weeks? We give you guys a chance to, to deal with this issue and see if we can find out what's going on, and come back.
My only request would be that select board members send an email to myself or Alex on what your concerns are, or what changes you would like to have, so we would sort of have all the pieces on the table when we review it.
Well, we have a discussion going on right now, if, if any select board member would like to issue.
Sure, I, I said these the last time, I'll tell you, right now, I think it says 50 people, 50 signatures, I think that's too few, 50 sig, it takes 100 to bring something before a special town meeting. You'd think to name something, you'd want at least 100 names, but maybe even more, I think 50 is too few. I think the, the other thing that's got to be dealt with is the authority of the select board versus the school committee for, for school property, is, is, are all town properties equal? Are rooms the same as buildings, the same as fields, the same as roadways, the same as, what, I mean, there's a whole series of categories of, of town property, and I think we've got to potentially either address them all, or at least know which ones we are addressing, and, and which ones we are not, we are not addressing, and, and as I said, I think there needs to be a, a, to my mind, a little bit better guidance about if we're naming it after a person, what that person's either contribution has been, you know, how long it's been since they've made that contribution, I'd hate to, you know, it's the old test of time thing, and I've said this, I think, the last time, when you, you know, the, I'm a stamp collector, and I, people looked at, well, there was this whole controversy over whether you could have living people on stamps, and, and, you know, that, whether somebody has to be, have been deceased for five years or 10 years, or to pass the test of time, and I think that's a meaningful thing for us to say, we're going to vote to, to name a building after somebody because they did something great last year, are we going to have somebody who passed the test of time, or how we're going to do it? But, uh, you know, I, I think, I think that's right, we're, we're, we're not trying to name something and rename it in six months. You know, this town's been around for a couple hundred years, and things tend to stick in terms of names, so, you know, I think historical versus contemporary names, or all that kind of stuff's got to be considered, and I don't know how, how you do that, but I think you ought to.
The intent of the policy as currently drafted was to leave it, um, to have some threshold criteria to at least, um, get, let people, let people know, let the readers of the policy know that there is a minimum number of signatures, it does apply to all town properties, meaning school buildings. Now, whether it's classrooms or separate, that's a discussion that, I mean, I think if you re, I, I did discuss this with the town council, and if you, if you strictly interpret the charter, it is all town buildings, including classrooms and everything else. Now, I think the school committee, um, from a political standpoint, or from a serving their constituents standpoint, may want to have the opportunity to name people that they want to honor as, as an also, like, you know, town-wide elected body, that's something that could be worked out. Um, I, I think if I was, you know, I guess, when I, the first blush at this is to keep it not, not vague, but as flexible as possible, so you, because you, as you said, Richard, you can't possibly scenario build everything that would come up. And, uh, Mark, your point is well taken about, you know, should it be like the Hall of Fame, um, you know, need to be retired for some, certain number of years, or dead for a certain number of years, and I guess, probably what that is, is, you know, we wait till somebody's dead before we say nice things about them and honor them. Um, like I said, this was just a conversation starter, because, like I said, it had been asked, what's our policy, do we have one, we should, we should have one, and so this was our kind of first blush at it, and we thought, rather than be too prescriptive, give, through the policy, the select board the ability to make case-by-case evaluations, and, like I said, that was simply the intent, we can, you know, if we want to tighten it up and make it more prescriptive, we can do that.
Okay. So?
Yeah, my, my objection, I don't, if we have a policy, I think it should be very stringent and very, very, not, not broadly defined, very narrowly defined. Um, I have a concern about naming anything after an elected or public official, someone who's paid by the town, or state, or city, or whatever. Um, you know, we have buildings that are named throughout the country for people who secured funding, uh, even though it wasn't their money that they secured, so, um, I, I would like to see where it doesn't include anybody who's worked for the town employee, and that, that would be one thing. I think it's dangerous when you start going down the road, uh, I, I think the, why I think the policy should be very, very narrow, narrow, is you go down a very dangerous road of to who's contributed more, and when you get done with it, because Long Metal is a town in which there are many volunteers, um, and we're going to have a group that wants to do something large for the town coming up a little bit later in the meeting, but when you have a town that does as much as we do, within our own community volunteering, you're not going to have a lot of things to name after people by the time it gets said and done, and, and I do believe if we do have a policy that it's not voted on, upon And, and I do believe if we do have a policy that it's not voted on, upon by the select board, I like to see it at a town vote. Town votes happen once a year, you get a much broader, uh, group of people voting. Uh, and I think if we're gonna take something that's owned by the taxpayers and name it after someone, then the taxpayer should have a right in, uh, who, whose name gets put on anything. So those would be my suggestions to the policy subcommittee.
Yeah.
To me, a question like this, to me, it's kind of a waste of time to discuss it in the abstract. You know, when it comes time to name something, you know, this question of, you know, is, is really joined. Frankly, I'd rather not have this, uh, delegated to our subcommittee. I don't think it's worth the time, um, to, to develop a, I mean, 'cause to me, the only thing that this policy adds is that you have to have fifty signatures and you have to run it through the, um, town manager. Otherwise, it basically is as it is, meaning that the select board can, uh, name things as it sees fit. So, you know, I don't recall the last time we've named anything after, I mean, I haven't been on the board as long as y'all, but I don't recall this board naming anything significant in the last seven years. So to me, I, I'd rather deal with more weighty issues than a poli-, you know, a policy to decide how we're gonna name things in the future.
Naming policy could be to not name things after people. I mean, the schools are named after neighborhoods and things like, I mean, that's, that's another way to go. And in all sincerity, another way to go is to, because what, what happens though is, like I said, this came up. I recall, um, a, a baseball league wanting to honor somebody. And people do get in a thing where if someone's been a part of something for thirty years, they wanna honor the person doing that. And so then, you're right, it does get into murky kind of gray area. Like I said, in, if I can, if you'll pardon anecdote, Lowell, the city council would name corners after people. They put a little black and white sign up saying this is somebody's corner. And remember, my family had one named after him, it was all a great honor. But I wondered how many times that corner's been, you know, named for somebody over the past fifty years in different city councils, and there really wasn't great tracking of it. And so I think the point is well taken. If you're making what is a political decision, could all of a sudden you name a park after someone? And then all of a sudden, you decide, ten years later, a different select board comes along and renames it? I mean, there aren't many things named, and maybe that's something that the town, that the select board wants to establish as a policy. You know, like I said, I think that's, that's a reasonable consideration.
That's not a bad point. I mean, and you, we drive by it a lot, is, you know, Picknelly Field was once called Quinn Field when I played ball in it. And a larger donation changed the name of the field. And the family whose name it was after was not too happy about the gentleman who, you know. So I think those are things that, that might need to be considered as well.
Absent a policy, it's hard to tell people that they, you know, that there's no way for them to do the honor that they wanna do. Or they could do it via citizen's petition in the select board's hands. The select board who's responsible for the care, custody and control ultimately of, of the buildings has no say in it. I think having some policy, even if it is, we shouldn't do this, you know, let the community know where the board stands.
Okay, well, I think, uh, I think we have a policy subcommittee for a purpose. And this, I think, is a valid purpose. I understand your point, Alex, I still think it's a valid purpose. The, the select board itself has got high centered. So can you guys agree to disagree and bring it back next meeting? And let's, let's vote on it one way or the other at the end, okay? Have you had ample discussion, everyone?
Sure.
For the policy direction? Okay. So we'll, uh, shell with the next meeting. Now, select board appointments. We have, um, one, two, three, four, five, about six different select board appointments that go on from year to year and year. And, uh, the issue came up on changing the memberships on it. But I guess prior to this, sometimes you get on there and you never get off. And so this was on last week's meeting and being the fact that Alex and I were both out of town and they, they felt a little bit shy to load us up, they thought they'd face us in person. So we have Scantic Valley Healthcare Trust alternate. We have Pioneer Valley Transit Authority rep. We have a Pioneer Valley Planning Commission rep. We have a Council on Aging liaison. We have a School Building Committee and a, I guess, a School Building Committee alternate. Okay, now, I know for a fact the one on the, uh, on the Planning Commission, uh, the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission representative, that, that is actually appointed by the committee. So that one does not fall under the authority of the select board. But I got another agenda item down in here. We are responsible to appoint the alternate commissioner to the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. And that is vested within the select board's authority. So, uh, we must make that appointment tonight. Marie, I, I guess we'll just open it up. Is there, is there any interest from any member of this board to serve in the Scantic Valley Healthcare Trust, uh, committee?
Well, I don't mind staying on it.
Okay.
There's still some issues I'm interested in getting involved with in regards to the Scantic Valley. I think it's, it's fascinating and I'd be glad to, um, you know, if anyone else is interested. If not, I'll be glad to still stay on.
Okay.
I just, procedurally, you want us to do these one by one or you want us to?
Whatever's your pleasure. The, whatever's your pleasure.
Let's sort it out and we'll do it all in one motion. It's my pleasure, I don't know what anybody else.
Okay, well, then you wanna open it up for anyone to say what committees want to be on?
Yeah, I mean, first of all, I, I think the School Building Committee is wrapping up. It'd be, I'm, I'm more than happy to continue to do that. It's, uh, you know, hopefully just a brief form period or, but I think we still oughta have an alternate just named, just in case. 'Cause if I don't show up, we need somebody who could vote.
Okay.
But I can't see a reason to change it at this point.
Is there anybody that would like to be the alternate on the School Building Committee?
I, I'd like, I'd be the alternate. And the only reason why you name an alternate is in the event that Mark can't be there, you actually have to notify the, the MSBA that the alternate has the ability to vote for a member. So that notice has to go to the MSBA, I believe, through the School Building Committee.
So I put you down, Paul, as possible, we'll vote on them in a minute. Council on Aging, you were the old, the old representative?
Correct.
And?
Did you want that?
Well, I'm gonna attend the meetings anyway.
Yes, I was there anyway, so that was, um, we had, we had.
Do you wanna relinquish that?
Yeah, I, I think we talked about it a few meetings ago.
We'll have Marie take that one. Pioneer Valley Planning Commission's Walter Gunn and should stay as Walter Gunn, uh, unless they wanna change. Now, we do have, we do have to set up an alternate for the commission. And, and my recommendation would be, uh, that we put the town manager in that alternate position because he has in his authority, under his position description, to do planning for our community. So it, it would seem appropriate that we have exposure from that individual. I mean, that's my, that's my feelings, but.
And are, the town manager's not currently a member of the, I thought we had like our, our DPW director, our engineer, a part of Pioneer Valley. Is this a separate board?
Yes.
A separate meet, is it? Okay, that's, I just want to, I have no problem with that.
Okay, any opposition?
No, I think it's a great idea because that's where all the grants seem to be flowing through Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. Um, I know you've already started working with Walter on that board.
And Mark Gold is Pioneer Valley, uh, excuse me, Pioneer Valley Transit Authority.
I'm more than willing to continue that. It meets us eight times a year. It's, uh, fairly low-key up until the point when they're gonna drop our rates, our, our routes every five years. We've handled it, so it's not a highly active.
Anybody wanna challenge this position?
No, they get lunch.
Okay.
Yeah, you, you might wanna, you might wanna trade one of those.
Yeah. Well, Alex, I think you and I did rather well. I don't see our name on anything.
I think that's what you got, I done this a week ago.
Do you wanna be on the CLA?
No, no, I'm fine. I've, I've got enough stuff going on, Marie. The one thing that I did find odd in the discussion that you had at our last meeting, which is, is odd, and I don't know, I'd feel odd about it. The fact that you are, you are a representative from the select board on the Scantic Valley Healthcare Trust and yet you are not a voting member.
No.
You're an alternate.
But, no, I'm not a voting member even as an alternate.
No, you're not a voting member.
Yeah.
And yet we have a citizen that is a voting member.
Yeah.
Who's that?
That, um, Arlene Miller. I thought that was odd, when I listened to the discussion, and I was unaware of it until that point.
That's the way it's always been. And I've always felt that we have to appoint Arlene. And, and so I thought we had to do that yearly or bi-yearly or, or something. So I'm not, just not aware of the process is, 'cause I'm new to the whole Scantic Valley Board.
Right, and, and, Paul, let's see, I guess Paul would have guidance on it, wouldn't he?
Paul's first, I guess.
Yeah, can, can you find out about that one, Stephen?
Guidance about?
Uh, whether we appoint Arlene? If that appointment runs out, 'cause we've appointed everybody else and now we're appointing an alternate.
I would imagine that, I'm, I'm sure it's, uh, just like our Pioneer Valley Planning Commission representative that the board appoints when the board appoints. Um, I don't think the board has ever reappointed Arlene. We have, I brought it up a couple of years ago that I think it should be, 'cause it's supposed to be a representative from the town, whether it should be the town manager or select board member. That's who it really should be, is someone who has the authority in town to, to bring the issues back. I just think, um, I understand that Arlene Miller's history with it, but I, I think it really should be either the, the town manager or someone from the select board that should be there.
CFO is also.
He's a treasurer, correct.
He's a treasurer.
Right.
Right, but he's not necessarily the representative from the town, so to speak.
Could you, uh, Stephen, could you find out and bring it back next meeting in the fourth? Okay, so, shoot, yes, Mark.
So, in the, in, in the, uh, attempt to, to be fair and, and give everybody something to do, I'll give you half, half a pass, Alex, but, uh, Richard, but Alex, is there something that you'd like to get?
I won't rock the boat, you guys can stay where you are.
I'm just trying to get everybody involved. Fine, I'll, I'm, at that point then, I, if nobody has any other comments, I'll make a motion if you. I move that we appoint the following people as representatives of the Long Meadows Select Board, to the School Building Committee, Mark Gold. School Building Committee alternate, Paul Santinello. Council on Aging Liaison, Marie Angelides. Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, uh, alternate would be Stephen Crane. Pioneer Valley Transit Authority, Mark Gold. And Scantic Valley Healthcare Trust alternate, Marie Angelides.
Second. Discussion?
For what it's worth on the School Building Committee, I'm, I'm glad you are the alternate because some, we're at the stage where familiarity with the project is key for decisions going down the line. So it's, even if, for Richard Knox's purposes, it is, it is meaningful to have some institutional memory on that project. So that's my only comment.
Any, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, next item. Oh, we got turf, turf field presentation. Stephen, pardon? Right?
There we go.
Yeah.
Oh, letter to, letter to churches. Oh, that's, that was, there was a letter in the packet that's.
Yeah, I know, and it, it wasn't on the agenda. I was gonna ask Stephen, this is, I guess, was Marie, was this the?
Yeah, they, um, with the meeting you were here, they asked me to bring back a draft because the select board was considering signing on for the fundraising letter for the ladder truck that I was looking to send out to businesses and nonprofits. Yeah, the board also asked me to review it with the town attorney. And Attorney Martell said he saw no problem with it. I might wanna just add a line stating that, um, there could be some, a tax deduction for residents if they decided to, uh, give to the fund. So I brought back a copy. I don't know if it needs a note, but people could respond to me if they want any changes on it.
I thought I sent you a copy of the letter that went out to some other.
No, I didn't get that.
She's, my email must be dying. Okay, I'll send you a, a letter of the, a copy of the letter, just maybe you can integrate some of the other ideas on it, Marie. Because I think the, it's more of a fund solicitation one letter.
Okay. Well, I'm not known for my word craft.
Well, is it, I certainly have the one that we sent to Bay Path.
That's, that's the one I was gonna send.
Yeah, I can, I can send you that.
Okay.
I just had a question, 'cause the letter's sort of incomplete at the top. Who is the letter supposed to go to?
Well, it could be.
Is this Smith?
No, in other words, that was just a sample letter. It could go out to, and any organization or business in town that could, um, they're building facilities.
This is a template.
This, yes. And people were just supposed to throw in ideas. And also, I guess the question is, is it going to be sent from the select board? And there was this suggestion by Paul and Mark, they were interested in that, but we really haven't had a vote on that. And I'm not sure if we can have a vote on it now, but if I could just get a feeling on how people feel, whether I just go ahead on.
The last one was sent from this town manager.
Last two?
The last two.
We can't, I understood there was a problem with actually having it sent by a town manager. Now, that was one of the reasons.
I thought it was by the fire chief couldn't send it out, but.
I thought the town manager was.
I, I'm not sure, I, we, we only talked to Dave Martell briefly about it. We'll resume the conversation on that.
Do we need action on this tonight then?
Well, I thought, Stephen just mentioned he was gonna send out the copy of the letter that he's.
I think everyone's received it before in a previous packet, but I can certainly resend.
And then overlay it with that. And the intent, I believe, you know, Marie said she was gonna bring a letter forth. And Mark and I said that we'd like to see it because, um, to sign on with it, so to speak. And we said, well, why don't we bring it back when the full board was here? For the full board to see if we're behind actually sending out a letter. Now, the construction of the letter, as long as it doesn't violate some ethics code or something, and, and then I don't think, I mean, we still might wanna see the final draft before the, the letter goes out. But I, that was the intent of bringing this back, is that, the, Mark and I said that we wouldn't have a problem signing on with that and, and to bring it back to the board to see if we would support the letter as a board.
Okay, well, let's, let's have a motion placed then.
Oh.
'Cause it sounded like they wanted the full board.
I would make a motion that we would, that the board approve a letter to be sent out for fundraising, specifically for the Quint Fire Truck Apparatus.
Second. Discussion?
Sorry. To whom?
Pardon?
To whom?
I would imagine you've got a rather large list, don't you?
At least fifteen thousand names.
Well, no, I was.
Send out the water bills?
I was gonna work on, um, organizations and businesses in town.
Okay.
And that, the list was something I was gonna come up with. I didn't know if we could task town employees to actually do that.
Is there any outreach on this that goes out to communities which would benefit on mutual aid?
It, it's not really at that, at that place right now. I mean, yeah, I mean, all of our mutual aid communities would benefit from us having additional firefighting capacity.
Since we're a permanent fire force?
Yes. Certainly, you know, if you look at, you know, North Thompsonville, it's a volunteer force. So, um, getting them to bring one of their aerial apparatus, they have to call the guys in, whereas our guys could jump right in and be there, you know, in theory faster than they could get to us. Like you said, I'm, we certainly could cobble the letter between what she's drafted and what went out before. I mean, I know the board had asked me to ask certain people contributions. I guess, I, I don't know if we wanted to define, I guess, I thought the purpose was to define who we should send it, even if it's just, these are the types of people in, in organizations we should send it to. I felt like that would be more illustrative. I mean, the directive I got, I believe, was, was limited to Bay Path and JGS.
Originally.
Originally.
But now.
If you guys wanna open it up to, to a greater expansion, we can certainly work together to find out who are the large stakeholders.
And I imagine we could certainly use the press's help on that, too.
Sure.
And publicizing this fact.
Can I, can I ask a question? What, the timetable, um, to purchase the Quinn truck roughly would be, when it, when the truck, the normal truck is up for?
Correct.
Replacement? Is next year?
I think it would be next, the fiscal year sixteen capital plan, is what we talked about.
Which you're gonna be working on?
This fall.
Now, and, right, starting this year. So the, the, the other suggestion that I would have for the board is, um, I would still seek donations, 'cause I think sometimes businesses do wanna donate, we just don't ask. But on the flip side of it is, um, uh, the chief financial officer was here as acting town manager at our last meeting and, or, actually, he was at our finance subcommittee meeting. There's, there's roughly gonna be one point four million dollars worth of free cash. And if we're gonna hold off, and I, it, I, I don't have a problem with fundraising because I think there, like I said, I think there are individuals and businesses that would like to give something because of, um, historical, you know, maybe the fire department did something for them and, you know, and that type of thing. So I don't have an issue with that. But I would think that in lieu of that, um, I still like to see the effort done. But if, in lieu of that, is that the board has voted two different ways at two different times. And I just think with one point four million in free cash, I know we need to pay off the rest of the overage or underage in the high school, about four hundred thousand, four fifty, whatever that number's gonna be. But we're sitting on a good amount of free cash, which is taxpayer money. It wasn't free, they paid for it. And I think that it would be wise for the board to allocate some of that money minus whatever donations come in between now and then to make sure that it is in the FY sixteen capital plan. I think that if we're gonna hold it to donations only as a way of purchasing it and if for a short fifty thousand, eighty thousand, ten thousand, does that delay the, the truck? So I think the board has voted, like I said, a couple of different ways and, and a couple of different times. But I think the majority of the board at various times has said that, if not all of the board, that the apparatus is something we should have, then, um, I think we should keep that into consideration as we go through the capital plan and process. Because, um, like I said, we've all said at some point in time, this is something that has already been voted on and approved. And if we're gonna wait for, we'll be short five grand through fundraising, then we're just gonna be looking real silly, I think, at that point in time. Especially when there's some folks that are stepping up to the plate in the next presentation that will make, um, our fundraising letter look a little bit lame, in my opinion. So, um, or a lack of, or, or, you know, falling short on that. So I just think that we really need to step back and say, okay, great, fundraising's good, I, I believe in it. I think it'd be a great thing to do. But I think the, the, if the donations are there, great. And if they're not there, then that should be part of the FY fifteen, sixteen capital plan, I'm sorry.
Okay.
And just stop playing around.
Gives you something to come up with at, at our budget discussion. So I guess this is up for a motion that we approve a letter in concept? Is that what the motion was?
No, is it to, is the motion to approve this letter?
No, to.
Approve a letter?
To.
To expand this.
To, to expand this.
Fundraising effort.
Last time they asked the whole board to bless this going forward. And I, and I think we had a motion that says, all your motion, I can't remember how you ordered it, voted it was to adopt a fundraising letter.
Yeah, I, I make a motion to, uh, expand the fundraising effort, um, from the original direction that we gave to town manager to area businesses and individuals.
Okay, second?
Is that not specific enough?
Second?
Yeah. Discussion?
Stephen, is that, um, specific?
Clears my, no, no, we just, I, I get, no, we're, we need to prep and the work can take place offline if Marie's the one who's from the boards who's working on it. But in terms of how do we expand it, who do we expand it to, I get it.
Okay, and I wanna, I wanna amend my own motion, that the letter be signed and endorsed by the board. I'm sorry.
Yeah, okay. And discussion? My only discussion is I'd like to see it done sooner than later, 'cause we've, we've kicked this thing around. Okay, all in favor?[1761.88]
Aye.
All opposed? No? Okay. I think a couple of minutes ago we said turf presentation. Stephen? Is this yours?
This is not mine, other than the gentleman who you're gonna hear from approached town staff, as well as others, I think, about an idea for a turf field for the football field at the high school, and I will turn it over to them.
Would you gentlemen please introduce yourself?
I'm George Abdow, fifty-five Really Road, in town.
Shad Han, nineteen Oak Road, Long Meadow, obviously in town.
Could you just say your last names?
A-B-D-O-W.
H-A-N, R-A, H-A-N.
Thank you.
I just wanted to clarify, too, 'cause I did notice on the agenda, it did say the Arbor's Kids, but that's just the business, but that has no affiliation with this. This is just through George and I, so, there's no affiliation.
What was the first name again?
Shad.
Shad?
Yeah, S-H-A-D.
Okay, thank you.
So we were here a couple of months ago, we presented to the school board, you know, basically just kind of went down, you know, why do we need to replace the, the field that we currently have? We stated that there's over four thousand high school and youth participants in the town of Long Meadow, which all currently pay to play. Long Meadow does not have adequate, well-maintained playing fields for these high school and youth athletes. Long Meadow would be able to utilize this field year-round as opposed to paying other facilities for space for tryouts, practices, and games. This is long-term cost reduction. Synthetic turf is cost-effective, considerably less long-term maintenance than normal fields. The average annual maintenance cost on a well-maintained natural grass field is fifty, roughly fifty-eight thousand, compared to thirty-five hundred for synthetic turf. Though the initial installation is more expensive, the savings after ten years makes synthetic turf a worthwhile investment. Environmental risks. In the last ten years, there have been dozens of studies completed, all of which concluded that synthetic turf provides no greater health risk to participants. California has the strictest environmental regulations and concerns in the U.S., and they are currently installing synthetic turf at a record pace for its green-friendly aspects. Grass fields require thousands of gallons of water, as well as dangerous pesticides for fertilizers, and long equipment produce large amount of pollution. Sports safety and performance. Studies have shown there are no more injuries due to synthetic turf as opposed to well-maintained grass playing fields. Many of these fields in Long Meadow have uneven surfaces, which increase the chance of athletic injuries such as strained muscles and twisted ankles. Uneven or damaged surfaces can affect ball roll, speed, and even athletic performance. The most competitive advantage? Most local postseason games are played on synthetic turf. Long Meadow will be able to practice and prepare for postseason play all year long with a synthetic turf field. Many schools in the area, including our rival East Long Meadow High School, have installed synthetic turf fields, thus currently hold a competitive advantage over our teams. Other grass fields in towns will be better preserved as new turf can be used to handle more town usage without wearing them down. There are over twenty-plus communities in the surrounding area that has turf, West Springfield, East Long Meadow, Springfield, Holyoke, Chicabee, Chicabee High, Enfield, the list goes on. I did submit this to everybody as well, and that was basically what we had. This was a picture of what the field rendering was.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
I'll have to ask his permission first. No, exactly.
Granted, he knows us and so forth. First of all, thank you. My understanding that this is going to be privately funded and volunteer effort to, not volunteer, but volunteer, privately funded.
Yes, hundred percent privately funded. We have set up a 501(c)(3), and we, as you said, we have hit, we have gotten approval of the school committee, and I've been waiting for a month and a half to present to the Select Board, and we are waiting to hear your outcome before we get the ball rolling. We've privately held meetings with banks and numerous individuals in town, and there is a lot of support in town for this effort.
Okay, I just, if I can continue to follow.
Yeah, absolutely.
The other concern is, and because we just did a renovate, or repair to the high school track, and I know that's been a concern, that's been mentioned by some, that, you know, the turf field, whether it's gonna damage, not damage the track, and in the process, have you guys, do you have knowledge of how that would work, and?
Yeah, we had, last meeting we had, we had a representative from AstroTurf, and they put in ninety percent of their fields with tracks already installed, so they built a bridge, and there's no damage to the tracks.
Okay, 'cause that was, I know that was a concern.
And they are willing to rate, guarantee that in writing.
Oh, okay, even better. So the next question I have, first of all, I want to say, you know, we talked about, and, and town has been talked about for a number of years. I like to say the outcome of the last Thanksgiving Day game was because East Long Meadow had turf, but it was on our field, so it didn't really help us. But kidding aside is, I think that, we talked, I was on a, at a committee seven or eight years ago with the high school, with some high, folks from the school committee, school department, athletic director, and we talked about resting fields. And it's a physical impossibility to rest fields in Long Meadow with the number of participants that we have, and you pointed out four thousand. I think for the Board's knowledge that having a turf field, we literally, we do not have a current resting policy as, as far as I know, because of the usage is so high, that we literally could start to rest fields at Russell Field and improve them, and Williams is the, my, my best example, because if you play football or lacrosse there, you're playing in mud on a rainy day. And it would even allow us to rest that field for the shape that it's in. So first of all, I want to say thank you for coming forward to do this, because I think it's great, I think it's great for the town of Long Meadow to have folks like you guys that come in and say, this is the way to get it done. And I think that this Board should endorse this proposal, accept it, and promote it, because it will do a lot for the community. I know there's difference in maintenance and what the long-term effects, I know there's, in your presentation, it says eight to ten years as a warranty, and my understanding is, we don't know a lot beyond that, because that's the kind of lifespan of the air.
You can expect that the field will have to be replaced in eight to ten years.
Okay, okay.
And part of our whole program would be to set up a fund, and in addition to the regular town people that play, there would, would be an opportunity for other programs. We have heard from Bay Path.
Bay Path.
That they, that they have expressed interest, as well as some of the private groups, private soccer clubs, and the whole process would involve taking money that is, is gained from that and putting it into a fund to replenish, so that it would be a self-replenishing field. Part of our proposal would include everything that would have to do with the maintenance other than the, the actual labor hours. We would provide a cart, which would be used for grooming the machine, the field, and if snow removal would be needed, they would, they would be able to use the cart to do that, and it, it would be a turnkey process, where the only thing that would have to happen would be the town employee would need to be educated.
Okay. And there was another, you know, we had a soccer team that used to run that Long Meadow High School called the New England Mutiny.
Yeah.
They're now in East Long Meadow. And the reason we couldn't rent to them years ago was because we had to stop it because of the poor condition of the football field, and we, obviously, it was the right thing to do, because we had to bring up the conditions. But we talked about the maintenance. Can you just explain to, to the, to us what the routine maintenance of that, of that field would be? We know, you know, we see the guys out there mowing, and like you said, spraying and so forth, and fertilizing, but what's the, what does the maintenance entail?
All of the painting and everything that would be put on the field in the original installation.
Sewn in.
Would be permanent.
Okay.
So the maintenance would involve almost raking or grooming the surface to regurgitate it, move the, the filler around a little bit, and to keep the bristles up as opposed to getting compacted. It, it's a dragger.
Okay. And the, the negatives, 'cause you, you know, the, the thing with turf fields is there's always some sort of environmental negative, and is it still chrome rubber that they use in the, in the fields themselves?
Yes.
Yeah, and that's when you talked about California.
Right.
It's the same stuff that's used out there, where, okay, I just wanted to clear, make sure I, I was clarified. Thank you.
Oh, excuse me.
Go first.
Oh, go ahead, Al.
I was looking at my time.
I, I guess, in order for me to, to support this, I'd have to have a lot more concerns addressed, and I, I would hope the rest of the town would as well. I've done a fair bit of research into this, and the EPA, EPA, the CDC, other state governments have expressed concerns about artificial turf fields. I, I know you guys were putting together a PowerPoint that, you know, was a summary, and I know that you all obviously feel that it is safe, but I, I don't think it, I don't think your PowerPoint slide on the health risk really accurately depict where the science is right now.
I did, I'm sorry to interject, but I did forward over a lot of the studies that were from the C, you know, the EPA and whatnot as well. I don't know if you received.
Can I get the State of Connecticut Board of Health and the.
I didn't, I didn't get those. I've looked.
That was, that was forwarded over, though, that.
Yeah, we just, we, we got, I think, was this, just a slide.
I just got this slide.
There was, there was a whole, yeah, there was probably about at least eight or nine different studies from different health departments and EPAs that do, that do support it.
All right.
Who was it forwarded to, do you know?
It was either Stephen or Paul, I believe. Or somebody that was.
You guys were talking with Paul, I think, via email.
Yeah, correct, 'cause Stephen was out of town.
Okay. Okay, Stephen, so I guess you can find those studies and kick them out there.
Health impacts?
Yeah.
But, I mean, I'll be interested to look at these, 'cause I, I'm, I've looked at things that are current as well, and so maybe this is a disagreement about the science. And I guess I kind of look at these turf fields in, in the context, in a kind of a historical context, because AstroTurf has been around, I mean, it was invented after World War II. The idea behind it was that urban kids could have green grass to play on. Well, that's actually not what it was used for, it was actually used for professional sports stadiums, sometimes high school, sometimes college, and, you know, and I think the acknowledgement is that for a lot of years, it was considered a good service, and then turned out not to be a good service, surface. Professional athletes hated playing on it up until very recently. I, I don't know exactly how the feeling is now, these days, but, you know, the concern I have is that I think there's a lot unknown about it. I'd rather, you know, the, the people who were putting in AstroTurf back in the sixties and seventies and eighties thought they had a state-of-the-art technology. It turned out not to be. Now we're trying something new, which is this chrome rubber, which has been linked to elevated lead levels. One thing that even the Turf Council itself, which is a kind of a promotional body, talks about is the heat concerns. So, you know, one of the issues is, you know, we're trying to increase playing time on the field, but the issue is that when the heat is, say, at seventy-eight degrees on a natural turf, a natural turf field, it might be a hundred and fifteen, and, and the Turf Council admits that it, it's much higher on hot days, and, and to the point where it really can't even be used. So I, to me, the usage issue sort of goes both ways, and because there are days you really shouldn't be using it, because it is so hot, and, you know, that leads to concerns as well about heat exhaustion and that kind of thing. So to me, you know, to say this time it's different, that, you know, we've, we've worked out all the bugs of the AstroTurf this time, I'd like to see, you know, a, a real track record be developed, because quite frankly, lead and toxic chemicals take a long time to express themselves. What you really need are longitudinal studies to really decide whether these elevated lead levels, you know, are causing harm. So I'd be happy to have that, you know, back and forth with you guys, and I, I hope the town has that back and forth as well about the health risks. Sounds like you guys have looked at some studies and, and some things from different governmental organizations. I have, too, just recently, I was looking at something from EPA. This was late 2013, where it sort of pulled back from a statement that it had previously made saying that there were no serious health concerns. They, they decided that was overly, overly stated. The statement that's currently on the EPA website about chrome fields is much more equivocal. It's not an endorsement, it's a statement about needing more information. And to me, you know, why experiment here? To me, the, the issue isn't, you know, can we prove that they're harmful? Can we prove that they're safe? And, you know, so, so to me, the, the usage goes both ways. The health risks, I think, are real, and, and I just want to be sure about something like that before we introduce it in Long Meadow.
Neither of us work for the companies. We're both full-time employees that, that do other things, that are volunteer coaches for the program.
Sure.
Just to answer a couple of your questions or concerns. Right now, the varsity field, which we're proposing, the only thing that that field gets used for are varsity games, and there are only, not every elevated varsity team can play on that field. So, and allowing teams to be able to practice on that is an addition. If it's too hot of a day, the teams can always go back to where they practiced before we introduced the field and practice on their original fields. We're not taking away any fields that they're currently practicing on to, to put this field. As far as the health concerns with the leather, with the lead, again, I've read the reports, hopefully it'll be forwarded to you, that there are, there are different toxins and stuff that are in the chrome rubber, but in New Jersey, they actually, a town mandated that the companies come and take out the fields, and they had the employees all dressed up in Tyvek suits with respirators and everything else, and they also wore breathing zone, air samplers. And within three or four hours of working, having the engineers on site, even ripping the stuff up, it was determined that there were no hazards, and everybody was allowed to work in regular standard clothes. And, I, I mean, the, the people are only gonna be playing on the field.
Right. And, and go back to it, too, you go to the, where you were saying, Paul, about the, the fields being muddy and whatnot. You know, there's doctors in town that, when it's dry and dusty, they're, you know, how many kids go in with respiratory infections or have to get on inhalers, you know, so it's not healthy on grass field or hard, you know, as opposed to artificial, you're gonna have issues on either end that you can argue, you know? So there are health risks on, on either end, but I mean, again, they're going up everywhere, you know, and I think if it was a large enough health risk, I don't think you, you know, I don't think California would be doing it.
Well, if I could ask you a question, I mean, what, I mean, I think we would all agree that the turf, AstroTurf fields of the sixties, seventies, and eighties were mistakes.
I, I think part of it was because of the installation, and, and it was, they were, that was where you'd always heard about the knee injuries or the ankles.
Right.
You know, now there's a.
And then concussions from, you know, 'cause there's.
Correct.
Concrete underneath it.
Correct.
I mean, so, the, the people who put those in there thought that it was a good technology and it could work. I mean, they didn't do it thinking that they were gonna harm people, so.
You can say the same thing about automobiles in the fifties and sixties compared to today's automobiles. I mean, what we're proposing is to use a, a current high-tech gen, that, that they have worked on and generated and improved since the sixties and seventies and eighties.
But what are the, I mean, I, I, the studies obviously don't exist to definitively decide whether these elevated lead levels are harmful or not. I mean, there, there definitely are harmful, harmful aspects to it that people have warned against, there have been studies done, and I guess the question is, you know, how well do we understand that risk? As you indicate, there are risks that are associated with playing football or anything else on grass, but I think those risks are pretty well-understood. What's not as well-understood is, you know, using these chrome rubber fields.
Did we just, we fixed the track, and that's used with chrome rubber?
Let me, let me let, Mark had a question. Let me let him slip him a question there before he loses it.
No, it's not a question. I have, I have an advantage over most anybody in this room, that I worked for the company that made AstroTurf originally, for thirty-four years. I've seen AstroTurf made. That was the old AstroTurf, and as Alice, as you indicated, the AstroTurf being made in 2014 is, the only thing in common is the company's called AstroTurf, but it has nothing to do with the original AstroTurf. So, and I'm not speaking necessarily in favor or against this right now, I do have some concerns, and I'd love to ask a couple of those questions. And one thing is, when I saw your presentation, I, I was, the first comment in there put me off, because it says there's over four thousand high school and youth participants. We've got twenty-eight hundred kids in our school system, so the number probably needs to be adjusted downward somewhere. I can't imagine other four thousand separate kids playing sports when we've only got twenty-eight hundred in our school system, but that's beside, beside the point. The, the concern I have, and what I'd like to get more questions about, answers about, is, is the economics of this. I lived in town when we put in the track and were told that the track will, and the quote at the town meeting was, "The track will not cost the town of residents of Long Meadow a dime." And here we are, a few years later, and we're putting some substantial money into repairing it. So, George, I was quite, you know, interested in your comment that you're looking to create a, as you said, a fund or some kind of a replacement fund. And I think knowing the economics of that would go a long way, and I'm not tonight, but at some point, knowing the economics of that would go a long way toward assuring me that this really is going to be funded by private contributions rather than a one-time thing that eight years from now, we've got a six or seven or whatever it costs, $100,000 or whatever it costs to replace a field at that time bill that we've bought into. So, it'd be nice to know that, in fact, we have, have that kind of a plan. The other thing that I saw in your, in your proposal was that you talked about, and you didn't say it here, but in your proposal, creating some kind of a committee or somebody that would oversee this, the use of this field. And I guess, I'd like to hear more about how, who, what, when, and where of something like that. Right now, we have issues over, is it the school committee that gets to allow this? Is it the town that gets to allow it, especially if we're going to start renting it out to other organizations? You know, how would that be controlled and by whom would it be controlled? So, I think there are that details, and the other thing would be some of the, as you said, the grooming equipment and things like that. So, I guess my bottom line on this isn't necessarily a discussion on the health and safety and environmental impact of it, although clearly all those are important. But I'd be looking for a more complete business plan, which would show me that the economics of this really are taken care of, that it is cost-neutral to the town by accepting this gift, that we're not accepting a gift that's going to end up costing us, you know, $500,000 and eight years later, we've got to replace this thing. It's costing, going to cost us $70,000, $65,000, $70,000 a year, just to put aside the money to replace it. So, I would hope that you folks would be able to present this in a manner that really ties up a lot of those loose ends, for me at least, in terms of cost, in terms of long-term replacement cost, in terms of rental opportunities that we've got, rather than say, yeah, the people will be beating down our doors to rent it. Who do we have that's beating down our doors and what kind of fees could we charge? Because there are other organizations like Springfield College who have turf fields that rent them out, and we're not going to get twice as much as they do, those kinds of things. So, if we could close in some of those holes, I think the other issues that we're going to have, that will be debated, of health and safety and environmental, they're going to go on despite what the economics are, but as far as I'm concerned, until the economics and the long-term viability of this thing is cleaned out, I wouldn't even start getting to that discussion.
Well, to start off, the 4,000 is based off of each sport. Kids play multiple sports.
Okay, so it's not 4,000 separate kids, okay.
Exactly. Just clarify that.
We took the numbers from youth football, and youth football...
Field hockey.
...kids really did play, a lot of them play lacrosse and other sports in the spring.
4,000 participants.
Participants, correct.
Yes.
Right. So, you're looking to, you want us to answer the committee part, like what our thoughts were on that?
I don't think you get to answer them. I think you get to propose them, though, certainly, of, you know, as they say, a straw model of, you know, as they say, put some meat on the bones here, you know? What, you know, how much is it going to cost? What's it going to cost per year? How are you going to come up with those costs per year? How many times a year do we have to rent it out? At what cost do we have to rent it out per year? You know, you know, again, so somebody came to me with a business proposal that says, and oh, by the way, how are we going to generate the funds so that eight years from now, we've got another, you know, figure out whatever the escalating costs are, estimate it, we've got another $600,000 to replace that field, or maybe the second time around, it costs half as much. I don't even know that.
It's about $200,000.
Right, right. So, I mean, those are the kinds of things that I think need to go into the system. Clearly, once you've prepared the base, replacing the field is a lot cheaper the second time around. But, Shad, those are the kinds of things that I'd be looking at, literally, as opposed to, we've got a great idea, trust us, we'll raise the money, and here's the field, by the way, you know? It's a lot different from, here's the plan and here's how it's going to work.
I have a question, but I also have a question.
Mary note, as you go forward, what your plan is, is to plan this dedicated fund, which I understand the rental fees will go into, so that we're preparing for replacement in the future or repairs or anything, which is a wonderful idea. I don't think it's really worked in town yet, because you're going to have to probably look at two votes from this board. One, accepting the gift, and two, is allowing that dedicated fund to go in, and as Mark is describing, how that fund is going to work. Because who's going to decide what the fees are? Who's going to decide on the rentals? Who's going to control that? Because if you just have a regular fund, it could easily be taken over, well, we're going to fix this field here, we're going to use it there, and it won't go towards that turf field in the future, then we will have the problem in replacement there eight to 10 years. So, I think it's, you're trying to bring in something new we've never done in town, and I think it's a great idea, but I think you better be very careful about how you're going forward on it, and also, who's training the person who's going to be maintaining that field and using the truck? And so, there's a lot of pieces in a lot of different parts in town, you'll have to figure out how that's going to balance in the future, and I think this board will be interested, as Mark's saying, on the details. My question was on the timeline. What were you really thinking about, and how soon do you think you might get this up and going and installation?
For the, our goal would be for the spring of 2016.
16, right. And so, you would have it in place then, or start?
The start of it, construction.
The start of it. And how long does something like that take to?
Eight to 10 weeks.
Eight to 10 weeks. So, you'd be out of the full summer season, and by the fall, you would hope to be able to have that up and going?
The field's not utilized now, so, during the summer, so...
Well, the track program goes through June.
It'd be after, after the school.
Yep. Yeah, go ahead, Paul.
Okay. Couple of things. One is, I think if you read the material, I don't think you folks are talking about setting up a committee to rent the facility.
No.
So, let's, let's be clear on that. The rental of that field would run through the athletic director, just like it does today. The revenues generated would go into the school general fund, just like they are today. It doesn't go back into a fund that they're talking about. Well...
Can I make a point on that?
Yeah.
Because the...
I'm just saying, that's where they go today.
Doesn't Town Meeting vote on that vending machine account? I mean, you could set it up that way, I mean, as a thought.
No, I'm just saying, that's where they go today. So, we're not, it's not talking about, in other words, it was mentioned that, it was inferred that these guys were trying to set up, these are them that are trying to set up a committee to rent and bring in money to the replenishment costs, and they, that's not what, if you read this, it's not what it says. It says a committee would be to fundraise, is what you're talking about on here.
Well, two different issues. The first thing is the, is the setup and the acquiring of the field. The second would be the regeneration of a fund to...
Right, and that's how I wrote it. You want to set up a committee to create ongoing revenue stream for the replacement of it, that's what you're...
Yes, all the other surrounding towns, my kids do play sports in all the other towns. They're not at high school level, and they pay for East Long Meadow, West Springfield, Hoyoke, and all, AIC, and every field that they go on, the clubs or whatever do pay fees, and they go to those different...
Right. And to Stephen's point, if you're having a rental fee outside of school usage, so, you know, our sports teams could use it from 3:00 in the afternoon to 11:00, but if you rent out to Joe's soccer team from wherever, we could establish a fund that says it goes into the repla, or something, that's what you were...
Because schools technically collect the vending machine money, but by virtue of Town Meeting, it gets dedicated to us.
Okay, so I just want to clear up, they're not, they're not talking about setting up a committee to take in that revenue, it was a committee to, for ongoing funding. Secondly, I think what the board needs to understand and really grasp is not, yes, there's a future liability, regardless, let's say this group comes together and they have to have the initial funding, and there's not another nickel raised. We have a future liability right now with the current field that we have. And that current field includes OPEB, and includes health insurance, includes things that you're still going to, that you are going to continually grow in the budget. So, when you're looking at replacement costs and future liabilities, we have one. We're not, we're not getting rid of it. Now, if the group does come up with a replacement cost, then we are getting rid of the future liability. But if the replacement cost is less than the future liability, I think, I think you've got to look at this in a little bit different level than just saying, well, we're going to have to pay for another turf field. We're paying for a natural turf field every year, and it's tens of thousands of dollars. And we don't get the usage on it, because up until two years ago, the only program to play on there was football and soccer. It was only two years ago that lacrosse started playing on there, okay? So, and youth plays on there, youth football plays on there.
Sometimes, they were told other times that they can't play.
Correct. And so, for, in terms of, Mark, we talked about the high school track never costing the town another cent. I don't think that, I remember that, and I remember that they did the fundraising, and the issue was, the fundraising was less than the cost of the improvement of the track, which, by $35,000, and they had to go to vote to Town Meeting to supplement it. I don't know if anybody would say that, and what we did on the track, I think, is routine maintenance, as opposed to not costing the town, and I don't think anybody had visions of a 50-year track or something. I don't, I don't, but I remember the conversation, and the conversation was, they sold those nice little bricks, they did fundraising, and they fell about $35, $40,000 short, and it had to be filled, I guess, the gap at Town Meeting, and that's what the uproar was about. I don't, I don't remember anybody saying the track would never cost the town another nickel. But I just, I think that the board needs to understand, and I'm going to give you my perspective, because I've coached football out there, I've coached soccer and stuff, and you talk about a cloud of dust. When we were in the upper practice fields and the health conditions of kids, we'd be proud, you'd have six, nine youth, no, three per grade, so, whatever it was, 12 football, 12, nine, nine football teams out there. And there were many a day where there was a cloud of dust traveling across Bliss Road over to the Russell Fields. I think you actually have more injuries with the turf, with natural turf fields, because they have to be maintained in pristine condition if you're going to say that we're not going to hurt kids, or, you know, kids aren't going to get hurt. Go play on Williams Middle School's field, take a look at, go over there on any given Saturday or Sunday when there's a drop of rain, and tell me what's safe about playing on that field, for, for any sport, and there's numerous sports over there. So, when you, this is a solution to an issue that we have, which is rest in fields, which we don't do. It's a solution to, and I'm not even talking about revenue generation, put that aside. It's a solution to reduce some things that we talk about budget every year, about OPEB liability, health insurance, and so forth, because you might be able to reduce the work hours that it takes to maintain it. But more importantly, it offers a solution to something that we need, which is, we need a field that you can be, that you can put a great deal of use on and rest other fields. And I think that we're missing the boat if we're going to start asking these guys to come up with a 20-year plan. I think what's being presented to us is an opportunity, and if we work with this group, I think the thing that we should be doing is looking as a town with this group about what the replacement cost would be, what the funds need to be raised, and what we're going to do if it's installed. And Mark, I'm not trying to diminish any of your questions, because your concerns are your concerns, and I respect that. But I think that if we're going to go in there feeling, portraying it as, we have health issues, you already have health issues with the fields we already have. If we're going to talk about the cost of the field in eight to 10 years, we already have cost of field over eight to 10 years. And I think that we need to take a step back and look at it in its entirety, and what it means for the entire field usage in town, and what it could do. And anybody who wants to talk about, forget about us bringing in rental income. This past spring, every one of our sports went into some sort of indoor facility and paid rent. Now, it might have been paid by Booster Club, it might have been paid by the athletic department, but our baseball teams, our lacrosse teams, all went inside to practice because there was snow on the ground. And we paid for that. So, whether you pay for it as a parent or whether you pay for it as a taxpayer, we paid for it.
Yeah, just very briefly, I guess, I have a, I don't know if it's a suggestion or a question, you know, as a part of the presentation, I mean, these are all very good questions. And there are 20 facilities that have these, 21 if you count Agawam that's moving towards one. You know, I'm going to guess that those folks have asked themselves and others the same types of questions. I guess what I would suggest to the board is to move forward, to move the conversation forward, if, to at least a point where you can make an informed decision. Pick three or four names of facilities, send me your questions, and I will reach out to these facilities and see if I can get them answered. And at least, you know, I mean, I appreciate what the gentlemen are proposing. In many ways, I do think it could be an enhancement to the town, not only operationally and for other reasons we've said, but I do believe that, from my discussions with the athletic director, that there are, there is a revenue opportunity and it could work very well. But there are questions out there that are also good. So, I would ask the board, I mean, I don't think it's, it's a little unwieldy to go after 21 people with questions, but if the board members would email me a few questions, the few biggest questions, I could certainly synthesize that into kind of a survey and send it to, and you could even tell me the five, you know, people here, the five locations here you want me to focus on getting the information from. That's just a suggestion.
Okay, thank you. Marie?
Well, tonight, what you're looking for is a vote and support.
My understanding is, we were coming in tonight to make a present, to make the presentation and then come back for a question session on the next meeting.
Oh, okay.
I don't know if that's still holding true or what, but we did have a representative from AstroTurf Corp. that we were scheduled to have come in and answer some more of the professional questions at the next meeting.
And at this point, I have been doing some reading, I would support the turf field, but a second session to answer more questions, if that's what you were planning also.
Well, I mean, that's what we were told was the process.
Okay, well, why don't we follow up on what Stephen has requested, or he's offered to? The board pretty well in agreement that, shoot, there's some questions?
So, just in terms of this, so, the, so this would not, as you, as, I can't remember who said it, this is not something that would go before the Town Meeting?
No, not necessarily. The board, the board can accept, actually, Town Manager or the board can accept donations on something of this scale, it would be something the board would vote. The vote would be, we vote to accept the $750,000 or whatever it is, that would be conditioned upon the construction of this field, so it would be the exception of donation.
But what are we, I mean, they don't have the money, I mean, the, yeah, I mean...
Once they made it, once they raised the funds, they would come, I guess...
Right, right now, it's, you know, there, it's, we're working on getting all the backing right now, but what's holding us up is just to go forward, is with approval of the board.
Right.
It's similar to what we just talked about with the grant, where sometimes there's a reluctance to donate if the commitment to do the thing once the funds are raised isn't evident. And I think that's what they're looking for.
Can't raise funds if you don't have a turf field.
Right.
One more point, I mean, if Long Meadow was Southwick or an adjacent town where there were plenty of green fields that looked like fairways, this might not be as pressing of an issue, but the situations that I've endured and everybody else's, that the coaches endured with these little six- and seven- and eight-year-old kids running around in the dust in all these different fields, and, I mean, if you talk about lead levels and contamination levels, those are the kids more susceptible to any contamination than the actual high school kids. Long Meadow needs to have a higher quality of fields. And the reason why we jumped on this and are trying to get this through is because we feel, as Commissioner Santinello said, that we would be able to upgrade the fields around the town in addition to having the, by having the turf field, because we would be able to better treat them. Right now, Williams Field, you can't do anything with it, because football's going to start playing on it, if they haven't started already, and, I mean, there's just no way you can plant, you can fix, you can do anything with these fields.
So, may I ask a question? Yeah. So, I mean, I guess, I mean, we have a great number of fields in this town.
No, we don't.
Well, what I mean by relative, compared to the one, we have, you get my point.
By the number of participants we have, the number of fields we have, we have half the fields of surrounding towns.
And I get that point, but I guess my, my question is, we're going to increase, according to your plan, capacity of one field out of 20, 30 in town?
I don't think we have 20 fields in town.
It really depends on what you, you know...
All right, but, but I guess, I guess what I'm saying is, if you increase the capacity by, say, even 50% of one field out of 20, the overall impact seems to me relatively modest. But maybe I'm missing something.
You could increase it by 50%, because you could use the field all day long, right now.
Except when it's hot. So, I mean, that's, and see, that's to me what would be more, I mean, again, I've got an issue with the health concerns. I've, I think if we, I think if this gets passed, and the lead issues that have, that are percolating here, 10 or 20 years from now, we will be condemned for having done it. But putting that aside, I guess what would be interesting to me is to see what really the impact would be on all the other fields, you know, because it seems like you're making one field out of, say, 20, you know, you're increasing the capacity on maybe some, but it seems like the overall impact is relatively small. You know, maybe it's worth it just to, in your view, to have a surface for the football team to play on. Again, I disagree. I think there's going to be more injuries, but, I mean, that would be something, in addition to the business plan that Mr. Gold was talking about, is to really put some numbers on what the impact on the other fields would be.
Okay. Paul?
Thank you. I, you know, I, I challenge you on the, on the elevated lead levels of crumb rubber. I really, I like to see the cases of the people that have had to have some sort of lead treatment for lead poisoning documented, as opposed to saying that it's unsafe, because I can say it's safe and you can say it's unsafe.
Well, the CDC, I'll send you the link. The CDC has specific concerns about lead in artificial turf fields. This is on their website right now. So, that's not me, that's CDC.
No, I said, all right, I'll challenge on that.[1792.65] No, I said, all right, I'll challenge on that. And, and the other thing, Stephen, for informational purposes, every state university has a field that was recently installed in the last five years of this nature. They might be easier to get a hold of with, because they have a lot of documentation, I would imagine.
I just want the board to be comfortable with where the information's coming from, so, like I said, if I may, send me a series of questions, plus the three schools you want me to talk to about it, and hopefully there'll be some consensus. We don't have to do that, I just thought, because I don't know the interest-
I'm just saying there's plenty of them out there, yeah.
Yeah.
And I got one more point if I could before I let you go. I have, I think, a different advantage over the rest of the board, having coached on, on that level, I know Mark's coached and so forth, but when you talk about the usage of the field, again, I think the board needs to step back and listen and learn a little bit. You're not talking about necessarily for youth sports, you talk about the high school sports. Literally, right now, you could take in the fall season, football, soccer, and field hockey, and have them practice on that field in Russell, Russell Field. You literally could have, you literally could have no action going on in Russell Field right now to rest them, groom them, fill in the holes, whatever it is. You could do that with a turf field, you can't do that today. Because soccer's on that field, as soon as soccer's done, youth soccer comes on to play, as soon as lacrosse done, youth, uh, field hockey, youth, youth field hockey comes on. Same thing with football. When, when you talk about a rest in policy, a rest in policy's taking the, the play away from other fields. I've also had the advantage of my daughter playing college sports, where she'd have a practice at eight o'clock at night. Why? Because the football team had it from that time, this team had it from that time, and so forth. So the difference is, you flip on the lights and you can literally practice from three in the afternoon to 11 o'clock at night, or rent it out, or whatever you do at that point in time. That's how you enhance the resting of fields in the long term, because you utilize that field not 24 hours a day, but, but an enormous amount of time that you can't do on grass. It just, it's impossible, you ruin, go look at every, every field on Russell Field after lacrosse season, and you'll see certain bear spots where the goals are every year. Soccer season, the same thing. So, the rest in program comes from the fact that you can have lights on and the play goes long into the night, like a night game, but you take the, the play off of the fields where they are right now. So, I just, I would, I would agree with, with the town manager that we take a look at three different venues that have this there, add, give some specific questions and guidance to what to find out, and bring these folks back with their, with their expert on the AstroTurf, and see if, if there's something that we can move along forward, and, and get questions asked about the, the lead in the chrome rubber. I'd like, I'd like to have those answered as well.
Okay, I'd like to let Marie make one comment, and then we're, I'd like to close the issue.
Well, that was, I was going to say, we're not going to vote, let's close the issue, and then we'll get the experts in, as well as residents can send us their comments.
Okay, but I want to close it with a little more resolution. Stephen is going to do some follow-up work?
I, I think the expectation was, all of you would send me some information, and then I would follow up from there.
Okay, and the, the things that, that did seem to come up was, there apparently are some reports that you or Paul may have that you can send-
Yeah, I definitely have enough to check those.
Okay.
But I really want the specific questions, to you guys to send me your specific questions, because I want to make sure that I'm clear on what I'm asking to the communities.
Please, please look for those reports and get them out if you can, please. And, and the topics that were brought before, of course, obviously, the health concern, we have the cost of the replacement, and that's an operational issue, and the operations of the field, and I guess that, a lot of that information may come out at our next meeting. Have I missed any of the concerns, or-
I think it was the, what I brought up, how much resting would really take place.
Yeah, the, the conditions for the field, and I, okay. Okay, gentlemen, thank you very much.
Who would be formulating the opinion to come up with how much resting would take place? Would, would that be something that the town Parks and Rec people would do, or is that something that we'd be looking to try to put, I mean, I wouldn't know what we'd do with something like that.
Well, I think, we, we can come up with some kind of analysis, I mean, I think it's, you know, and I don't want to belabor the point, conversation, but, when you talk about resting fields, I kind of share how I visualize this. If you've ever been to a natural grass driving range, they have areas roped off, okay, and when you hit, they dig it up because you've been hitting on it, they move the ropes to fresh grass, and then you can't, and they replant grass there. And so, it's basically the same thing, where if you have two practices going on Williams Field right now, you could rope off one field for an entire summer, move those practices over to this turf field, and then that field regenerates for a whole season.
Right.
And then the next season, you rope off the other, I mean, that's how I look at resting the fields. Now, I haven't discussed this with the Director of Public Works or the Grounds Department, but that's, I think, what's intended by this.
I think, I think you would have to be pretty dim not to understand the concept of it. The question is, how, what's the quantification of it, you know? To my point, if you're increasing the capacity of one field out of 20 by some percentage, what's the overall impact? That's, I mean, that's sort of the deeper-
Yeah, I mean, to some extent, I guess I don't, I can talk to them about it, actually, truthfully, I would ask these other towns, because us coming up with analysis on something that's never happened, that's unprecedented here, is not all that meaningful to me, anyway. I'd rather ask the other towns what, if they found that their practice fields regenerated. And besides, you know, the, on the scale of decision points, I don't know how high that rises for me.
Okay. Well, let's, let's move on. Gentlemen, thank you very much. I think we got a lot of questions out, I think there'll be more correspondence going, and we'll get a little more research. Stephen, you and I'll talk about getting them on the next agenda, correct?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if we want to push this out a little bit, because it's going to take some time to get the survey together.
Okay, well, let's, let's get back with it, and see if we can do the September 2nd, or whether we've got to go the middle of September, because obviously, we do have time.
Yeah.
You're not wanting to start construction in October.
No, no.
They do want to start fundraising.
Fundraising is the quickest one, so the sooner the better.
Okay. I appreciate you guys sort of getting together and bringing this proposal forward to the board.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Stephen, police mutual aid, I guess we got the chief back up.
We do. In your packet, you'll have, you have the mutual aid agreements for, this is the, we had done one month or so ago with the town of Enfield, which was an interstate agreement. This is the baseline agreement that we share with the communities around us. It is time to be re-upped, if you will, and I invite the chief here to answer any questions.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, absolutely.
A while back, I remember there was an issue where, this isn't that issue with the state police about going, Long Meadow being able to go into another town if we were pursuing someone, this is just purely mutual aid.
This is mutual aid.
Okay. And we already have agreements in place?
Well, we have one, the, the mutual aid agreement that we are currently working under was signed in 1980. And a lot of it doesn't pertain anymore. In fact, I can show it to you, the signatures of the people who were select board and members back then, some of them aren't even alive anymore, so it, it's really been a long time in coming. And this mutual aid agreement is very well spelled out, the, I don't know if you've had a chance to look at it, but the, our legal team from the Massachusetts Chiefs has gone through it, and so, all the legalese has, has already been done. This mutual aid agreement is already in effect in Worcester County, Essex County, Hampshire, and Berkshire also, the district attorneys have signed on to it, so Handon is, and Franklin are, are coming up next. So we're, we're just trying to get up to speed, so to speak.
Is there anything that you're limited by by not doing this? I'm just, I don't see a reason why not to.
Well, yeah, because state law says that you must have, under chapter 48G, says you must have a mutual aid agreement to request, ask for us, as Mr. Grant asked about before, or mutual aid for extra details, or if we have a problem at night and we need extra help, or whatever.
So, limits a lot.
Correct.
Yeah, okay, that's why I just wanted to get there.
Does it have any provisions for concurrent jurisdiction, or can your officers make arrests there off-duty? Or is this just strictly mutual aid?
No, it's mutual aid, it's, it's not like we're going to be sending somebody to Boston to, to do, that's not what we want.
Okay.
So, as I read it, I mean, there's this notion of self-activation, so that, so as I read it, that would allow, allow the sending jurisdiction to invoke its power to do police work in another jurisdiction that's party to the agreement?
Correct.
So, I, I just think that's important for everybody to understand. I think normally, when I think of mutual aid, it's a request. I think this agreement involves both requests from other towns, but also the ability of a town like Long Meadow to go into Springfield to maybe investigate a break-in. I mean, would, would that-
That's not what, no, that's not what this is about.
Okay, well, I understand, when you say it's not what it's about, I understand that may not be the intent, but, I mean, why, why couldn't somebody under this agreement do that through the self-activation provision?
Let me read the specific-
It's section 6.04, chief.
Okay.
Well, that would fall in what I was talking about, concurrent jurisdiction.
It's enforcing or investigating any traffic-related incident or violation, whether or not it was originally observed in territorial-
I'm sorry, where are you?
604, self-activation, is that what you're talking about?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, right. I would imagine, right? I can answer.
But, I, so you, you think it's just traffic?
Yes, I do.
It doesn't say that, though. It says, police officer observes or becomes aware of any violation of law. I identified this also, Mr. Grant, as, as something that just surprised me, because it says, anybody who observes a violation of law within the territories of any party, it says, may engage, may start engaging in stopping unlawful behavior, investigate possible criminal violations, make an arrest or detain offenders pending arrival of police officers of the receiving party, which essentially says to me that if somebody sees, from East Long Meadow, a police officer observes somebody speeding in Long Meadow across, in a reckless manner, they can come into Long Meadow, stop it, and request that you come in.
And the same thing would bear in mind for drunk driver, or reckless driver, and that's, that's the intent.
Right.
It's not so much that we're going to be going to Springfield to investigate a house break, so to speak, unless we're requested to do so, so.
Well, I, I understand, you know, obviously, there's a lot of discretion that you retain, but under 6.04, it says, a police officer who observes or becomes aware of any violation of law within the territorial limits of any party may exercise police powers within the territorial limits of any party, for the purpose of, for several purposes, including investigating possible criminal violations. That's a very broad grant of authority. I, I think it's a good one. I, I just, I just want to make sure that we all understand what we're doing, for the reason that you're just, we were talking about task forces, right?
Correct.
I mean, how could a task force officer from Long Meadow do police work in anywhere else unless you had something like this?
Correct.
I mean, already under state law, I remember this, because I did a case one time on it, about hot pursuit.
Correct.
You don't even need one of those for that, you know, if you're, if you're a Long Meadow police officer, and you're chasing somebody, and, and they decide to go across the line to East Long Meadow, they can do, the Long Meadow police officer can go across the line and, and act on that, in that situation. This goes, you know, well beyond that for good reason. But I just think we should understand, this isn't a situation where, like, there's a fire department where somebody asks us to come in. This is a much more flexible and, and kind of robust authority.
Why I always refer to this as concurrent jurisdiction, that's what I originally asked, where if an officer observes a crime in another, in any one of these communities, he has arrest authority.
Well, for felony, we do anyway.
Yeah.
But this, this basically just-
Is that under state law?
Yes.
Under state law?
Chief, chief, after my question before, the, one of the parties on this, on this
mutual aid is not East Long Meadow, I noticed.
And it's only because they haven't brought theirs before their select board yet.
So, but, so this, where there's all these towns that people are going to be signing it for, eventually, the town of East Long Meadows will be added to this?
Yes. You'll see Springfield is not here, West Springfield's not here.
All right.
So, this is in, in its infancy right now, so that's why, you know, a lot of the, a lot of the-
So, what, what's the intended scope? Is this a Handon County kind of thing?
Well, this will be Handon, but it's also a carbon copy of Worcester's, of Essex, of, you know-
Right, right, but the goal would be of, of your police chief's organization to get all the members of all the towns, cities and towns in Handon County to sign on.
Correct.
Okay.
So, we need a motion for approval?
Right, there's also, we got a couple here, Marie's got a question.
No, you asked for a motion.
Yeah, motion for approval.
Move to approve mutually.
Second.
Okay, discussion, which we've already had a lot of.
I, I would suggest a modification to it. Under the signature line, I think it ought to, instead of, say, Stephen Arkray, Town Manager, I think it should say, Richard Foster, Select Board Chair. Because I think that's the proper party to be entering into this agreement, to be, to be signing it.
What are the other towns doing?
It looks like a lot of them are, there's only one town manager, it looks like select board chairs, most of them.
I mean, it's-
Chancellors.
Not that it makes a whole lot of difference one way or the other, but, you know, I think it's, like, a town administrator probably would not be authorized to sign something like this, but whereas a town manager does have some ability to encumber the town via signature, subject to select board approval, so as I was going to say, the vote could be authorized, me, to sign the mutual aid agreement.
I mean, I just think if it, if it's the select board that's deciding it, then it ought to be the select board representative that signs it.
But there's, I mean, for what it's worth, there's lots of contracts, I sign it, the select board approves, I mean, it's just how, that's how it works.
Yeah, it looks like it's 50/50, a lot of select board chairs, some mayors, uh-
But see, a mayor is the town manager and the select board combined.
So, are you trying, because my motion didn't ask for any changes.
Sorry, I'm moving to amend.
He was amend.
And do I need to approve the amendment now?
No, he said, you can make the motion, amendment motion.
Yeah, I would move to amend.
Okay, and was second for the amendment?
Second for discussion.
Okay, second for discussion, discussion on the amendment?
I'm satisfied with having the town manager sign it, I think it's common protocol.
I don't think it is common protocol viewing on this, Marie. I, I understand your statement, but viewing on this, it's mayors, select board chairs, and I think there's one town manager in the town of Amherst, that's the only one that seems to be a town manager.
But that may be the only town with a town manager.
Well, Hadley, a town of Long Meadow, what, where, there?
Can I ask the chief one more question?
South Hadley.
Since we're in discussion.
North Hampton, that's a mayor.
No, they don't.
The request for mutual aid still comes, and I'm assuming a lot of this is emergency mutual aid, is-
Correct, for the most part, yes. Well, sometimes it's routine, like when we ask for, if we have extra construction details, and we, that's, that's, does the same thing, that's mutual aid.
In cases of emergency, I mean, you're getting a call in, in the Long Meadow Dispatch or something, that we need help in East, I know there was a miss in East Long Meadow six, eight months ago, there was Springfield, there was a bunch of people there for the, because the guy had a gun and everything.
Correct.
So, we're doing it now. This is really to formalize it, make, because it was from 1980.
Correct.
So, we're, we're not doing any, we're not going to be doing anything different, we're not sending the, we're not sending our cops into other communities and saying, go arrest people or anything, it's just the kind of things that we're doing now, just re-establishing it, or repurposing, I guess, or renewing it, with better language and-
Correct.
Okay.
The legal language has all been changed to represent the current times, rather than 1980.
Any more discussion on the amendment?
Mayor X.
Okay, the only statement I did, I don't have the exact definition, but it does appear that in most of the cases, it's either a mayor or a select board chair signing these. I was trying to see if there was guidance up here, and I don't see anything, so I don't really have too much of a dog in the bite, other than I thought you brought up an excellent point. It looks like that is intended for the mayor or select board chair to sign.
It's easy to change, it's on a template.
Yeah, so, all in, all in favor of the amendment?
All right.
Okay.
The vote on the amendment motion.
That was the amendment to pass, the emotion is the acceptance of the agreement as written, except for the modification on the signature plate.
Sure, thank you.[1728.76]
Discussion over, all in favor?
Right.
All opposed? No.
It's good, because my middle initial is J.
Yeah.
That saves that.
Who was going to go sign this?
Richard asked.
Yeah, I guess.
Who would sign, Stephen?
Okay, so the motion, original motion-
Thank you, chief.
That was seconded, and then Mr. Grant's amended.
Amended.
Motion for, to approve the amendment, and then the motion to approve the original motion with the amendment.
Right, everything passed.
Got it.
And we were procedurally in order properly.
That's right.
I guess the next item on the agenda is the Purple Heart Town Proclamation. Could the Veterans Agent please step forward and explain what this is all about?
Oh, thank goodness that you're here. I just thought we had-
My bad knees acting.
Yeah, I'm sorry to do.
Yeah.
Did you guys receive a sample copy of?
A very pretty one, yeah.
Yes, yes. I worked on this with the, Brian Willett, the commander of the Western Massachusetts Eight Seventy-Five Military Order of the Purple Heart. Basically, what this is, is this, towns around the area, there's towns such as Holyoke, Chickaby, Lotlo, North Hampton, Granby, have already done this. Seven hundred and fifty communities across the country have already done this. What it is, is it's a way of recognizing your combat wounded heroes and those that have died in battle, and by acknowledging them. August seventh, which just passed, is also nationally recognized as Purple Heart Appreciation Day, so along with, you know, proclaiming ourselves a Purple Heart community, we would go on August seventh and display patriotic things, you know, such as the American flag, which we already do anyway in this town, just, just to recognize. That's, that's, I mean, that's, that's the quick gist of it. Does anyone have any exact particular questions? Otherwise, I'd just request that you guys pass it and make it a, you know, pass the proclamation.
Mark has it. Yeah, I guess my question is, so we're doing this now fifty weeks in advance of next August seventh, is that?
Well, that's one part of it. One part of it is on August seventh, you, you basically display patriotism in honor of the Purple Heart recipients and those that have died in combat. But being a Purple Heart community is a year-round thing. It's not a, it's not a, something we're planning for fifty weeks away, we're planning year-round. Like I said, it's just, it's just to recognize our, our combat wounded heroes.
You may vote again in fifty weeks to say, to designate August seventh as Purple Heart Day in Long Meadow, but this is like establishing, this is similar to establishing Tree City, USA or something, it's, it's an existing designation, I don't know, there's a sign that we would hang in town hall that would go along with this or something, but it's, you know, it's a pretty, you know, easy thing.
Yeah, most communities, most communities do up a nice proclamation with the city councils or select boards.
Do we get a proclamation from Washington on that?
And hang them wherever, wherever you hang your proclamations, you know, that they're visible. Holyoke's done some really nice ones. I've been to Holyoke's Purple Heart ceremony when they officially presented the proclamation, like, people from the Military Order of the Purple Heart came, you know, cameras, news, everything, you know?
You can take care of all those details?
Yeah, I could do all that for you, yes.
Yes, go ahead.
This is an awfully laudable cause, and I tend to support this. My concern, and I, I think I need to express this, is that, that we may be opening the door for a whole bunch of requests like this, which we have, I know we have turned down in the past under the pretense of not opening the door for flying flags on the green, naming the town, having days for this and days for that. There are a lot of, of, of requests, and clearly, we get to pick and choose, I guess, each one of them, and that may be the way it's going to go, but I'm certainly, we ought to expect that these will be frequent and, and come before the select board for, for naming the town, or conducting a day, or recognizing, and I think in the past, they've been diseases, they've been seeing eye dogs, they've been all kinds of other things that have been both laudable and maybe less laudable in people's minds. So, again, I guess my concern i- is, you know, is there a benefit to the town of Long Meadow for doing this, and more importantly, is there a downside to the town of Long Meadow for opening, the, opening the door for additional, additional recognitions and days without a plan for how we're going to do it?
I guess I would say, Mark, one of the things that separates this one is, because I've been through that in other towns where, you know, we want it to be, you know, we want June fifteenth to be dashing, you know, Long Meadow Dashing Day, for anybody who has their dashing hounds on the green or whatever. The day is designated nationally, and I'm assuming that was an act of Congress that designated August seventh National Purple Heart Day. So, that decision in terms of design a day is out of the select board's hands, insofar as if you become a Purple Heart community, that is the day that's been nationally designated. So, I don't believe you open the door for that kind of, you know, annual or frequent requests with the approval, or with the adoption of becoming a Purple Heart community. My other thought is, you know, we are really trying to evolve how we honor Long Meadows' veterans, you know, the Wounded Warrior Five K was a big step forward on, was near Veterans Day. You know, I know that there's been discussions that we had, the town green policy was up before, and we're still working on it, but, you know, it seems like the ceremony, the memorial ceremony honoring the veterans at Long Meadow Days, which isn't even on Memorial Day, kind of gets a short shrift a little bit because of the noise of the generators and the food carts, and it just, you know, I think we need to build, you know, or not build, but we could certainly improve what we do to honor our veterans, and this seems like an extremely easy thing to do without, specifically, without opening ourselves to a whole bunch of other, you know, precedent-setting things, and, you know, like I said, there may be precedent, but the select board reserves the right to approve them or not approve them, so it's up to you guys whether or not you're opening a can of worms.
Right, right. Go ahead, Paul.
I just wanted to say, I, I understand where Mark's coming from on this, because while I've been on the board, we've had certain things, and again, the fly flags and declared days, and I agree with you, but I think Stephen makes a great point, that it is not the select board declaring August seventh as Purple Heart Day, it's already established as a National Purple Heart Day, so becoming a Purple Heart city, I think, is a little bit different than the tip, you know, declaring this as a day, so to speak, and, but I know, I understand that, and I agree with you, that you're opening up a door, but I think there's a differentiation here.
Yeah, go ahead, Al.
I was just going to say, you know, Mark, I mean, I've heard this concern about floodgates before opening up, but, you know, I look to Congress, which does these sort of proclamations all the time, and of all the problems that people associate with Congress, I've yet to hear that there, an overabundance of benign proclamations is one of them. So, even if we, the floodgates were to open up and we were to issue proclamations for a number of laudable causes, I, I'm not sure what the harm would be.
Do you know how many Purple Heart recipients we have in town?
No, I do not. I do not have an answer for you.
I'm sure we have some.
Oh, we do.
Yeah, I, I personally think this is great.
Anyone who's on our war memorials, that was killed in action, was a Purple Heart.
Yeah, I mean, active.
Living, I've met a couple already.
Yeah.
But I don't have a final tally.
Yeah, I, I think, I think this is great, and I, I've heard everybody's concerns, but I, this overpowers the, the negative concern, because we, you're right, we can control a lot of the other policies coming, but this one is a national policy. I appreciate you bringing this forward to the board, so-
Thank you, it's my honor.
Any other discussion? I'd like to call for a vote.
We thought, was there a motion?
We have a call, put a motion on.
You made a motion, I seconded it.
Oh, we did?
Yeah, yeah.
No, I don't think we did.
No, no.
I was thinking, we were thinking it, so.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It hasn't been made since she sat there, I don't know that I've heard.
There has been no motion made.
Wow, okay.
I move to accept Long Meadow as a Purple Heart town.
Second.
Okay, we've had discussion, is there any further discussion?
It was.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Not a one in the House. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thanks, Paul.
Thank you.
Okay, next order of business, COA site analysis update. Town manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to give you a brief update, because I missed the last meeting, to give some background, there was an article, a citizens petition approved at town meeting, granting thirty, up to thirty-five thousand dollars for the study of the existing site of the senior center, as well as potential sites for a possible new senior center. And it really was just a site analysis, I don't, you know, it was not a, we talked about with the dispatcher, it wasn't a giant step forward towards developing a new senior center, it was more, let's analyze what are our options, including our existing facility. This came up, as you all recall, during capital planning, when we were approving or recommending projects investing in the Greenwood Center, while there was a, at the same time, a citizens petition effort to build a new senior center. And the people who were on that task force that were behind that article will tell you unabashedly that they want a new building and a new senior center. We got the opinion from town council that because, even though it was a citizens petition and town meeting approved the mon, the funds, they are still general fund, it's still a general fund appropriation, and really, only town staff have the ability to spend general fund appropriation, so I kind of got involved to keep the project moving forward, and working with the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. The scope of work for the study was developed by this task force of citizens interested in this issue, but like I said, I have to sign the contract on behalf of the town because it's town funds. So, and then Paul Pasturzak signed it as acting town manager in my absence to keep, again, to keep the project moving, we want to, we want to get the study underway, and, you know, learn more about our existing facility, how it functions for the services we provide, are there services that seniors are interested that we don't provide. So, just briefly to go through a few parts of the study, if, I know the, the study, I think, this information was in another packet, but I, I'll just go through it briefly. And again, we, we have signed the contract, the, the scope was really what was, like I said, developed by the citizens, so they, this is really what those folks wanted in keeping with the spirit of the article from town meeting. So, it's, there's several elements to it. The first task is a broader facility and needs assessment, evaluate the current services, including a survey of seniors, review the existing facility, you know, and fit, for spatial and physical condition, and then just kind of a brief comparative analysis to what other communities have. And then, again, the, the last task is that survey of what seniors feel they, they have and what they feel they need. So then, it's site assessment, which is, there are, this task force has, has identified several sites, including, again, Greenwood, the existing site, that they believe would be good alternatives for a senior center, and so it's a site assessment of those, of those sites, and, and doing that in the context of the town's long-range master plan. So, if a master plan that we have on the books from two thousand and four is in support of a, of the site being developed for a senior center, then that would be something that the, that the site assessment would, would factor. But the criteria they're going to look at, location, buildable area, ownership, acres and parking, zoning, existing structure, utilities, topography, soils, wetlands, hazardous materials, it's a very, I mean, it's, I've done, I've been a part of several site assessments for different development projects, this is pretty standard fare, and I think it, I think it will do, you know, the kind of initial look at sites, as well as the existing one that needs to be done, if you are really going to truly evaluate what you have for a facility, which I think is, you know, obviously, town meeting supported the notion of doing this analysis, and I think that it doesn't hurt to look at it, and I, honestly, we could use one of these for our DPW, too, in fact, in more detail. Then the third task is a general site and building concept, this is kind of a separate scope of work that, you know, they have, they bring an architectural firm, and they either lay out, if they, if this, if the analysis concluded that a new site would be preferable, then it would be kind of a conceptual layout of what the building would look like on that site, just kind of a site plan, not, I don't think elevations. If it's the existing site, if it's Greenwood that they decide is the preferred alternative, then that would include some interior layout, because a site plan of Greenwood doesn't tell us anything about what, how it could be better as a senior center, whereas if you're looking at a vacant site or a site not currently developed for that, a site plan does tell you something, so. And then there'll be several public meetings that are, that will be a part of this process, and then a final report will be issued. The, this should be done according to our schedule here by the end of the year. I am meeting with Pioneer Valley Planning Commission tomorrow to kick this effort off, and I've invited the members of the task force, as well as representatives of the Council on Aging, and the Friends of Long Meadow Council on Aging, Faloka, to participate as well. I think this is the, the folks that are behind the article, really, I hope will continue to participate in the process and, you know, really have, have their opinions made a part of the analysis.
I put, I put it on my calendar, I'll let you know, I didn't talk with you. I may, I may try to stop down for your meeting, I'm not sure I'm going to get there, but I put it on the calendar.
Yeah, like I said, I think overall, it was, again, it wasn't a town-created or driven initiative, but I think it's a good one.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't, certainly, since town meeting has spoken on the appropriation, we don't risk anything financially by doing it, and we'll learn more about how we serve our seniors at the conclusion of the study than we know today, so I think, no matter what, you know, no matter what the outcome is, it's, it's a positive step.
Okay, thank you, Stephen. The next-
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead, Paul.
Regarding the study, what the article stated that the study was for, I thought that the article was very specific as to determine whether the woefully inadequate council, Greenwood Council on Age and Build fulfills the need of the center. How does looking at new sites determine the woefully inadequate investigation of Greenwood Center? I mean, I'm just, I'm, the warrant itself was pretty specific as to what, I guess it was pretty specific as to what it didn't say, which was for the building of a new senior center. And I understand what you're saying, is that they do their analysis, they come back and they say, "Well, this is what it's not doing, this is what it would look like," but that's different than finding, than doing site analysis of where a center could be built, because that's not what the warrant said, and we're taking it beyond the scope of the warrant article.
I, I don't view it that way, I, I hear what you're saying on that, and I think on a strict interpretation, you could see that, but I guess the way I view it is, it's a comparative value, meaning, does Greenwood provide the seniors with what they need from a facility standpoint compared to a facility in another location? You know, does it provide the same, would it, you know, say hypothetically speaking, the parking lot of the Long Meadow High School, just pulling it out of thin air, rather than go with one of the sites, they would look at, what does Greenwood do for parking, what does it do for access, what conditions is the building in, versus what would you get if you built it here? And how much, basically, what would that look like, and how much back of the envelope would that cost? And so, it really is to set up a comparison of different options, not, and that's, like I said, the analysis is a comparative one. Is that, I don't know if I articulated that clearly enough.
I, I think what, what everybody was told at town meeting before the select board was Greenwood's not suitable to perform to, what was the word? Not perform, is not suitable to provide services and programs for the people at the Council on Aging, and that the study was going to look at what would be suitable space. And I, I get that. So, what they're saying is that, here's our building, here's the programs we offer, we offer three hundred programs, and we have this many rooms in need and so forth, but this Article Thirty here does not say that we're going to go look, I understand they might say, this is what it would look like if you had a barren piece of land, right? I mean, that's kind of one of the things it would do, saying, here's, we did the analysis, and this is what it would look like on this barren piece of land, this is how the parking lot would be situated, the front door to greet people and so forth. But what it doesn't say in here is to do site analysis, and that's what I have a concern about, is that we're going way beyond, we don't even have a study yet that tells us we should look at site analysis, and we're going to look, as part of the study, look for site. So, there's, there's, and I understand what you're saying, that the, the task force group is very, in the Council on Aging, I think, board itself is very adamant about wanting a new senior center, but that's not what this says, and by looking at site analysis, we're, we're making the presumption that there is going to be a new senior center. This study could come back and say, the facility's fine, you just got to reorganize it or redo it, I mean, I don't, I don't know what's going to happen, and I don't know, because I'm not the guy who does that for a living, but we're making it by looking at other sites in which you could build a senior center on, a new one, that's making a presumption that this, the analysis have, and that's what my concern is, is going way beyond what this was proposed at town meeting, and it's that next step that goes beyond, which is the site analysis.
I really feel like this is, the, the scope of work, based on my experience, really is like five-thousand-foot level, and I, and like I said, I think Green, the existing facility, is part of the analysis, and, and, you know, that was one of the things we were clear on, we were discussing this with the task force, that to really, to really generate any kind of support from the town, that would ultimately have to bond money or do whatever to, to fund this, and then the town's going to end up- And then the town's gonna end up owning the building, they really need to look at Greenwood as well. And I think when you think about site analysis is, that's Pioneer Valley Planning Commission's nomenclature. For what the town meeting article is asking for. I mean, it's, it's not like they're gonna go out, you know, they're gonna look at environmental history, they're not gonna go out and dig test pits or do any of that stuff, I mean, it's. When you say site analysis, it really is a very light level. So if I, and, and I, I wanna say I, I don't remember if I specifically got him, if, if he opined on it, but I think I did talk to town council about this subject broadly. And we do think that this probably, that this fulfills the um. Spirit or if not the, the intent of the town meeting article. So I, I'm comfortable that this does not exceed the, the, what was authorized by town meeting. Um, and it doesn't really, it doesn't really go that far towards a new site, I, I don't believe. I, I certainly wouldn't be comfortable committing the town down a path of, we're gonna build a new site because it's, it's not really anywhere on our radar screen from a capital planning standpoint. I don't believe this does this, um, and we did have that, I did have that conversation with, with the town council and several others, so.
Okay, and does the site analysis also include looking at Greenwood without the daycare there?
I think it just looks at the existing layout.
Okay, cause that would suggest as one of the options, because we've had multiple discussions about whether those programs are profitable and not, they vary and, and waivers, that. That entire building looked at as opposed to just the existing space because it's, it, and I think that's what the, part of the issue is, is that if. If we're being told that there's not enough room in here, well, there's a building with enough room, that's just it's split up.
Well, I, I don't know, I, I, yes, the answer is yes, we should look at the whole building if that's, if that's available um, under the scope. I mean, I, I don't know that Pioneer Valley Planning Commission looked at a certain number of rooms, that's what they were gonna analyze. I, I think you made the point in a previous meeting, I, I think there's plenty of square footage, it's just not configured properly. And I think what they'll tend, what they will focus on is, can you reconfigure, I mean, cinder block walls and probably clear span roof structure. So can you reconfigure the cinder block walls in a fashion that the space could be more, used more, you could really generate a lot more usable square footage than you have today? Um, like this is, we're just kicking off tomorrow, I'll, you know, I, I will certainly keep the board apprised of, as things progress.
All right, thank you. Any more discussion? Go ahead Mark.
I'm, I'm adding, piling on here, but I agree with Paul, I think the scope of this goes well beyond what was, what was authorized at town meeting. And I hope we're not entering into a situation where, you know, give me thirty-five thousand dollars and, you know, I, I kinda know what I wanna do, but we, we kinda know what we wanna do. But once we get the thirty-five thousand dollars, all bets are off because we can pretty much set the scope the way we want to now, I know that's not exactly what's happening here, but. But I remember this came before us a couple, a month or two ago, I actually went back and, and I was just trying to do that, looked up the warrant article. And I'm absolutely convinced that the scope of this goes beyond what was authorized on the warrant, I've said my comments, I agree, I understand you disagree and. Uh, so we're gonna see where this goes, but you know, I'm, I'm truly concerned that, and I'm gonna state this later in the day, that. Uh, this evening perhaps, when we start talking about what are the priorities for the town. My, my comment will be, it doesn't really matter what we think the priorities of the town are, obviously we're running this by citizens petition. Whether it's by putting, investigating a new, a, a new adult center or putting in a, a turf field or whatever it is, you know. We, we sat here and said, you know, we, we think we need a new DPW and we sat here and said, you know, wouldn't it, it would be beneficial to have a quint truck and all these things that take money, but. We're gonna, we're not gonna do what we need most, based on our leadership, we're gonna need, do whatever twenty-five people come along and sign a petition and, and then take us forward in that direction. I'm, I'm not convinced that that's the right way to govern a town.
Go ahead Marie.
And um, the other hand, I think what they've done here is, I don't think they have. They're not spending the thirty-five thousand dollars, they've actually found Pioneer Valley Planning Commission that's coming in at seventeen thousand dollars. And they're gonna kind of bring a more complete report to us so we can understand what all our options are. So I, I don't think that it's, I think they've done a wonderful job and I don't think the scope anyway was trying to sell us one thing and bringing in the other. I think it's, it's just a, a complete report will be placed in front of us and then as leaders of this town, we can step forward and decide. And put our input also on whether we're going to renovate, we're gonna expand, we're gonna build in a new area. And the only thing is they're giving us information and I think that's what's been asked for all along. And I'm really impressed that they spent a lot of time and they're working with the town manager and found it. Instead of thirty-five thousand, they brought in a seventeen, then, so they didn't take the thirty-five and decided they were gonna do anything they wanted with it. So I'm really looking forward to hearing what they're gonna come up with and I don't think it's much different from what other towns are getting and they're spending a little more money to get it there, so. I'm impressed with what the task force has done so far and I'm really glad they're sitting down with the town manager, cause as the community planner, he really should be central to this whole process.
Any other discussion on the comments? No, thank you Stephen. Okay, next issue, we've already taken care of on the appointment of the alternate commissioner for Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, that was.
Oh, that was part of.
Right. That was given to Stephen, that we did, that we wrapped that in and approved it under there.
Got it.
Yeah, the next, the next issue up is a, a topic called Long Meadow Needs, fairly generic topic. Um, week or two, about two weeks ago, I guess it is, I sent a note out and I talked with Stephen and I requested. I basically told him, I said, you've been here a year and a half, I said, I would like to know what your uncensored opinions are. On some of the greatest needs that you've recognized for the town of Long Meadow, based on your understanding of where we're at today and, and what you've experienced. And I also went out to each select board member with basically the same request. I asked them that, if you had a free slate and you wanted to put down five of the most important things that you could think of to help our town move forward, what would they be? And I also asked them not just to say this, I asked them to try to put a little bit of meat on the bones and give us some ideas on what we would do. Now, the purpose of that was basically to get fresh ideas from, in this case, six people. Six, I would hope, different opinions and we will look for similarities and it, and it's the start of a process that will fold right into going back and looking at our long range goals and our annual goals. But I, I'm hoping that it will pinpoint some common points of interest, that we may be able to make some progress on this year. Hope springs eternal, but that was, that was the, the desire of, of this questioning. And we're at that point of our meeting now, it's nine thirty, nine forty, I'd, I'd like to do a quick survey of the board, do you want to proceed with this issue tonight? Or would you like to put it on the next meeting when we have more time? I would anticipate this is going to take several meetings to get through, cause we're going to voice what we've got here, then these comments will be synthesized and put in some type of rational format. And we'll come back then and go into discussion period on these elements. I would assume that we will end up in some type of voting apparatus on what we want to move forward with as a collective group. And it will summarize down to a list of five, six, seven, eight action items that can actually become an annual action plan for this year. And in the meantime, we're gonna bring in the, the goals from last year and we're gonna fold those in and take a look at everything as a bigger picture. Um, any comments guys? Tonight?
Richard.
Yes.
One of the things I've observed is that we always think the next meeting's gonna have more time.
Right.
And, I mean, you, you probably have a better sense of this than anybody, do you think we are going to have more time next time?
I, I don't know for sure, but I do know this process is gonna take more than one meeting. I can assure you that, it's why we'll take three or four meetings till we are able to synthesize something down that makes sense. So I, I was just wanting to know if, if we wanna get into it tonight, I'm certainly willing to get into it, I'm, I'm prepared to get into it, I'm sure everybody else is. Stephen, you had raised your hand.
I, I just, I, I feel like it, it was helpful for me to write them down. And if you had said come in and announce what your five priorities were, that's a very different way of framing the dialogue than writing them down. And I, and I know Marie had submitted something to the packet as well, and that was also helpful to hear in her own voice, what's her priority, I guess I'd say. If everyone did that, that would be a good place, we could start off of six written lists and go from there.
Well, I, I have a list and I don't know if the other gentlemen have a list or not, I didn't share it prior to the meeting. Matter of fact, I went through, for people that like to play with computers, I'd had this list up buried on my computer for about four days.
I thought you said years.
And, and I finally had it completed today, at about three o'clock, three thirty, and I went to save and my computer locked up. And I had never saved the document, so I consequently lost everything. So at three fifteen this afternoon, I started over from the best of my memories.
That's what you say, but the fact is.
No, that's true, I felt very stupid, cause I know better, always name a file and then it's back in and it's auto save, but I for some reason lost track.
Did, did you cry?
Uh, no, I, I didn't cry and, and we had a meeting tonight, so I couldn't even sit down and have a sorrowful drink. Um, okay, then I guess we wanna proceed?
Rich, can I?
Yes, sir.
I'm gonna say something, I, you know, the select board hasn't had goals that they voted on for two years. We did not vote on goals last year as a board of what we were trying to achieve. Uh, the last set of goals that we voted on was when I was chair and that was three years ago, I think it was, or maybe it was two years ago. And that was the year we had our transition from town manager to a couple of interims. My, I, when you sent out that request, my, my feeling was, you're gonna get thirty different messages about thirty different things that are important in town to six different people. By not having established goals and, and, and goals are, what are your budgetary goals, what are your operational goals? What are you looking to achieve for the year to make Long Meadow better than it was the year before? Having something that, that, you know, talks about things in, in, whether it's a quint truck, a, a facility or so forth, is not necessarily set in a goal. And I think I said this a few meetings back, is that I think we need to have a session that's not part of our regular meeting in which we set goals. And achievable goals during a year, meaning what is our budget parameter for the upcoming year, what is our, what, what do we see, what do we wanna achieve, like I said, to make Long Meadow better, that's not on the table right now? And we haven't, we haven't had that discussion in a couple of years, we haven't talked about voting on and setting concrete goals. This is six individual perceptions of what each of us would potentially wanna see in town, and I understand what you're trying to do is say, if there's thirty out there, is there five that are common? And if the five are common, are they, you know, my question is, and then what if they're all costing a hundred million dollars, what does that, doesn't do us any good whether they're common? Um, because I, I don't, I think when you, when you don't talk about managing the tax base and having long term or, or wish lists, so to speak, or objectives list, whatever you wanna call it. Of programs of, of capital, we're not really, we can sit here and talk all day about spending a hundred fifty million dollars in town. And if we, we don't have the simple conversation of what's our goal for the budget, then it, it really doesn't matter. And I think we've missed some of that all along the way of talking about what we wanna do. We're, our town is getting relatively close to hitting its max tax rate. Getting there, and I don't say we're there, but we're getting relatively close, it's probably closer, more closer than it is further away than it, than it's ever been. And all it's gonna take is one or two more significant projects and we're gonna be there and we're not having that discussion, so sitting down to me and, and talking about. The six items or five items that you wanna see in the next five years, it doesn't matter if you're not gonna talk about how to fund them. And the board has to make a decision, or some board has to make a decision at any given point in time, of what is the budget gonna look like this year, what's the budget gonna look like in five years? And you go backwards from that and say what projects fit in there. Um, or what projects do we want in here that we wanna expand the budget by X number of dollars and. I just, without, without having select board goals, I think it's, you can have any, any discussion you wanna have. I don't think it's the best use of our time to talk about the five projects that we want, or five things that we wanna see and why. That might be a different discussion, I'd rather see us talk about goals for the upcoming, for this fiscal year that we're already in and what do we wanna see achieved? To me, that's more meaningful than talking about five things that I wanna see happen in Long Meadow in the next five years. And I think it's a cart before the horse kind of, kind of thing and, and whether you have the discussion tonight or another meeting. The only thing I would say is that if you have it at, at the next meeting, is that to have a meaningful discussion, it should be in the beginning of the meeting as opposed to the end. I think that's where the difference lies about pushing it off to the next meeting, as long as it's in the beginning, I think you can put your hands around it versus whatever time it is, eight forty, nine forty-five.
Right, I, I would, I would anticipate in reference to some of the comments that Paul made, of course, there's, there's truth and wisdom in everything that's said in this arena. Because this is a large bubble that we're trying to juggle and get a hold on. Uh, I know for a fact that I have some comments and some of the desires and deficiencies that I feel are present in our community that would answer some of the questions that you just presented. Because they are also my concern, what I was doing is looking at a strategy to move forward with. I sense, I sense the one thing, and I think you will sense it, and I think anybody that's sat in this chair senses the same thing. We don't have a common document in front of us that we accept when we enter the board. Or enter as a member, or enter even as the chair to go back and say, this is the guiding document the previous boards have started and I'm not gonna erase, but I'm gonna add to. And I'm gonna try to get accomplishments because that document was well thought out and it was collectively the best opinions that we could get at that point in history. And I don't see that document and it bothers me somewhat, because Paul, we do what you're saying, we, we, we sit and reinvent the wheel all the time. And we have a two thousand four study and Stephen's mentioned it in here, we have a vision statement which you brought up. These documents need to be brought back and actually start to work on, they're no longer can sit in a closet. Uh, the needs are escalating in our community and we're not rising to, raising to the challenge of finding how to fund those needs. And yet, we sat tonight and had a presentation of a six hundred and fifty thousand dollar turf field that's coming in. And there is a concern, how do we replace it when it's due for replacement? Because we're adding to the infrastructure burden in our town by a vote, even though it's a gift at this point, it only is a gift for. So I agree with everything you said, I, I don't, I don't agree that this discussion is not beneficial, cause I think we have to have these discussions if we move forward. That's, that's my, my one belief and, and I'm only one person. I mean, we've got the rest of the board and Alex, you said a good thing, we, have we have trouble, are enough time for the next meeting? I don't know, if we put this as a number one agenda item, yes, we would have time, because we'd start out with this item. And we would go forward and we wouldn't, we'd push all the other business off to the side. Stephen, I don't know generally how large our next meeting looks, we got maybe a little follow through here, but we can put that off for another full meeting. Okay, yes Marie?
I support what you're doing and I think it's really important and I think we have to start and we have to, to be leaders in this community. And one of the reasons that we're starting to see residents come forward to try to say what the needs and wants of our communities are, because we don't have a voice. Now, Paul said last year we didn't have goals. We had a whole meeting, goal session to try to set, we couldn't even come out of that meeting with what a goal was. The arguments going back and forth, we're discussing what the goals were. One of the things that floated to the top was the DPW, we got two votes going forward that that was going to be important and then that fell apart, we couldn't take our first step. So I really liked what you were saying this year about all of us come together with what our top five points are and then action steps and how we're gonna go forward with them. And we do have to come together as the leaders of our, this community and deciding what is really a priority this year and move forward and get it done. Whether it's um, changes in the budget, whether it's a new DPW, whether it's uh, expanding our senior center. And I feel that what you asked us to do was a reasonable first step. And we could start now or a separate meeting, I know when Mark did his goal setting meeting, it, we had three meetings in a row at the end of August. It isn't, not an easy process, but I think it's really important process if we're gonna go forward.
Go ahead Mark.
I just say, to me, the, to get from where we are to where you, I heard you say we wanna be, we need a process. And right now, you know, to, to, unless you've got something planned, Richard, and I, I hope you do, that how do you go from twenty-five or thirty different. Maybe we'll only get twenty different ideas to get prioritization on them, we really do need the process. I've gone back and I've looked at the, the priority setting or the, the, you know, whether it's a, you know, setting our, our, our goals for the coming year. And, and many of them we've made progress on, but some of them just stand out at us, that year after year we don't make progress on. I mean, last year, I, I was looking, Maria, at last year's, the casino was very high on the list, we spent a ton of time on the casino. We haven't talked about the casino in several months now, because we, we, we came to a resolution on it, or at least we, we resolved it. But we're still talking about buying streetlights, we're still talking about potentially other income producing opportunities, we're still talking about our DPW facility. And that's because it's, you know, it, it, they're tough issues and I think, you know, anybody can, can guide through the easy stuff, it's guiding through the tough, controversial and. And contentious issues that, that, that are more difficult, if they were easy, we'd have achieved them, but I think we've gotta figure out, you know, do we have the will to do them and are we gonna do them? But more importantly, how are we gonna get, Richard, from this list of twenty? But more importantly, how are we gonna get, Richard, from this list of twenty different items to a prioritized list? To me, that's the most important thing.
Well, we're gonna get there by starting to share, and then we'll go from there to the next move, which is start to whittle them down, Mark. And I know you're from the business world. You've been through this and everybody, this panel, I guess, has played with this issue. Excuse me, Alex, go ahead.
I was just gonna say that, you know, my experience in government suggests that a lot of times you have a lot of unnecessary discussions when it, the question is to abstract. So last year, when we were, we were getting into arguments about nomenclature, what's a goal, what's a policy? To me, that's irrelevant. Let's just vote on what, on the substantive issue that needs to be decided. And I think the more concrete we can get, the, the more productive the discussion is. So, for example, one of the ideas that I had, which, which I did not circulate, you know, just is going back to something we've discussed, which is when we did the town manager's evaluation, we said he was gonna go on a performance plan. I think we've sort of left that hanging, I think in part because what happened, I think a few meetings ago, we sort of dumped a lot of stuff on your plate and, and, you know, and, and distribute, you know. But I mean, to me, I, to me, something like that, you know, addressing something that we've already decided make, is, is, you know, exactly the sort of thing that's achievable, you know, it's concrete and we can decide on it. And, and I think one of the things that's useful is, you know, having success, you know. Get, you know, getting something decided, getting something accomplished, something like that can build momentum toward bigger things.
What do you think about clearing up next agenda?
I'd have to, I'm not sure what we said we were gonna put off.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Can we get, I mean...
Pardon?
I have it all. You guys wanted to defer for the next meeting.
Yeah, 'cause we've only deferred one thing I'm aware of, and that's the turf field, and we can defer that off again.
We've got a roadway issue that will need to come up, that could take some time. I mean, truthfully, is it merit another special meeting, and I hate to say that, have a special meeting to talk about this?
Well, that's an option too. I know it, it, I'm a realist. It is ten o'clock. And I know this issue is going to spawn discussion. And the purpose of this issue will not really, it's a brainstorming more or less. It's not a critical critique of everything that's put on the table, and then we want to try to reframe from that because we want to let communication flow. That's the only way you'll get to a proper situation. How about if we scan it real quick? Marie, go or schedule next?
I would prefer schedule next because I'd like to see everything in writing.
Mark?
Yeah, schedule a special meeting.
Paul?
Not tonight, yeah. I, to me, I, I think it's worth starting.
Well, they beat us down. It's two, too.
Okay, that's fine.
So, okay, we'll, yeah, you and I can sit and talk.
There we go.
Okay, now, we do not have, everybody's comments have not been shared, and I did not ask that they all be sent in prematurely. Because as far as I'm concerned, you can bring them to this meeting, so it's up to y'all. I have some of them. Mine, I can send mine to everyone tomorrow. I've got them typed up. I can send electronic file.
I'd prefer that everybody send it to you and you compile them and send us one list.
Okay, and then I'll try to get some type of format to get all the comments and everything put on there.
And you're gonna save the document?
I will save the document. I, I will never do, I won't say I'm never gonna get it in my life, but I tell you what, I took a, I took an oath today. That one hurt, especially in this three, three fifteen. Okay, motion to adjourn?
Wait, 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 wait. I got something to say on the subcommittee reports.
Oh, I'm sorry. I just jumped and went right up. Okay, let me finish one thing on this.
Sure.
Everybody in agreement, we want to try for a special meeting?
Yeah.
I agree.
Yeah.
Okay, one week from this one? How's that look, just off the top of your head? Okay.
Rebecca's not gonna be here.
Rebecca, well, that's good. Now, you'll be on vacation, won't you?
I'll be gone, yeah.
But we've got one whale of a note taker.
Oh, the clerk.
That'll be okay. We may, we may have to push this issue forward. I know you asked, and there's no way we could have predicted this.
Okay. Do you want like the long list of things that you wanted to talk about at the next meeting? Because you asked me to like, for a little like...
Just email through.
Okay, I'll email it to you then.
Yeah, actually, we asked the clerk of the...
We can discuss that.
And I've got them, the list, if you want.
Subcommittee reports.
Yeah, okay, subcommittee reports. We'll have a special meeting.
The energy committee has been meeting. That's part of the school committee and myself. And we have started going around at night and doing audits on the school buildings and taking notes on what we can start changing the way of lighting because there's a lot of lights going on, a lot of buildings, and we're trying to figure out a way of decreasing the costs. And I think it's, so far, been very productive. Tomorrow, we're gonna meet again. They also, we had the police officer coming along with us to see, would there be issues about what lights would be turned down or in dimmer, dim the lights. They also had an audit of all school buildings, a free energy audit. And the, the next steps have been brought forward and have discarded, started discussions with DPW because the goal of this is to decrease our energy costs and the stress that is on the budget. We have an energy audit on the town side that was already done, and that was shared with myself from the town manager, and I'm bringing that to tomorrow's meeting so we can review what we can do on the town side in the way of decreasing our costs. The solar, there's grants for solar installations. We're looking into those. We're having a little more trouble getting information. But in, from the walking school bus part of all this that I've been working with Kim King, is I found out about complete streets, and I got very excited about this and I wanted to tell the board. We had a chance at grant money to improve our sidewalks and crossing, and that fell down because this board didn't do something back in 2008. And we were hoping to revive it. They said, we can't revive it. We have to get back in line. But complete streets has come up, and that is a whole grant that just went in this year's budget for fifty million dollars. And they said, a lot of towns don't know about it. We have to become designated as complete streets, and then money can, we can apply for grants. And complete streets means it's really looking at the use of bikes, walking, public transportation as well as cars. So I'm gonna get as much information I can on complete streets, send them to our chair, and see if we can follow up and get designated. And I think there are also going to be some informational sessions in September that we can intend to get more information on. But that's what we're doing in the energy committee. And then the walking school bus, there's going to be the pilot program will be starting in October. And the walking school bus is a way of coordinating kids who are riding or walking to school on a time basis so that it's a little safer and might help with our crossing guard situation. So I'll have more information on that when we really get that up and moving. But that will be Blueberry Hill pilot program starting in October, so that project is moving along too. We haven't had a chance to have a operational subcommittee meeting, but hopefully this week or early next week, and then we'll have a, a report on that.
You're about to get demerits.
I am? Or past twelve?
No, by not having a meeting.
Oh, well, vacations. We get to have some, some more vacations.
Can I pose a question with regard to what Marie just said to the town manager? The crossing signals that we brought up last October, where do we stand on that, Steven?
I still don't know what you mean about that. They've been inspected. I, I don't know if repairs have been made. I mean, it's an operational, I mean, there was never a mandate to replace all, or a budget item to replace all the crossing signals in town. I don't, I mean, but they, they have been inspected, and there were reports that I forwarded to the board some time ago.
So...
So there's, there was not, there was not a line item in the approved budget or the capital plan to replace all the crossing signals?
I mean, I guess what I was imagining is that you would identify the scope of the problem and work toward a solution, a plan to fix the crossing signals. And, and I, I guess I was, so I, I assume that has not been taking place. We're exactly where we were in October.
Like I said, they've been inspected. I, I sent all of you the reports.
I understand that, but, I mean, but in terms of their condition...
When you say fixed, the presumption is that they're, they're broken. Your presumption's...
The ones that are not. Are you saying that they're all working?
I, I believe so. I mean, at this very moment, I don't know. But as, as of the, the reports did identify deficiencies and certain things that we could do and certain things that we had to contract out.
I mean, because what you forwarded us in the spring, I believe it was March, did indicate deficiencies, which corroborated what the citizen had done in his report. So my question is, do you believe that they're all working properly? I mean, that, this is surprising to me because I thought we were at least at the baseline of, we all understood that they weren't all working properly. True, not true?
I, again, I would, I haven't looked at the inspection reports in some time. But if there were, like I said, if there were repairs that, that were made, they were probably made just as an ongoing maintenance thing. I didn't really log any of that. I, I believe that insofar as they can be working, they are working. I can certainly have them go back out and re-inspect it. But when we debated the annual town budget, an amendment to replace all the traffic signals was not offered.
Well, we didn't have a, we didn't have any proposal. I mean, that hadn't been worked up.
I mean, it wasn't, it wasn't issued, like I said, it wasn't issued as a line item priority or, you know. I, I, I still don't know, I mean, you ask about this periodically. And I still don't know what you ultimately wanted. Was it to ultimately replace every single crossing signal regardless of the status of planned intersection improvements or the existing controller equipment? Or did you want them all inspected, which is what I thought we all wanted, and that did happen? I, I don't know what the goal or the achievable here is for you.
Can I just fill my, for one second?
Okay.
I think if, if you don't mind...
Go ahead, Paul.
I think prior to the young boy getting hit by a bike on the corner of Englewood, we collectively, and I think we as a town figured our crossing signals worked.
Right.
I think what we found out when that citizen handed us that work that he did and said, these are the ones that don't work and these are the ones that do work. I think the, first of all, I would have thought our, I think we talked about this, that we, we, I think we were under presumption that that was something that DPW maintained, the work in order of the lights. Whether you contract it out or we do it in-house, I would, I would imagine that, at least my presumption is that DPW maintains that or makes sure that they're working. I think that the board, again, I'm just gonna speak for myself. I was under the presumption that we identified the deficiencies. I don't, I, I have no idea what the cost is to replace each and every one of those. I don't know if it's a light bulb. I don't know if it's a little push-button switch. I don't know if it's whatever. But I think that my presumption was that they were going to be repaired. I would assume now that with school coming up, that all the crosswalks work. And I don't know if I'm speaking out of school or speaking for you, but I don't know, that's kind of what I was, I thought we were under. And I haven't brought it up repeatedly, but I just assumed that it was going to be, they were going to be repaired because that's what DPW does. If a, if a red light went out, we repair it. We won't wait for someone to, whatever, but we would, DPW would call in whoever does the maintenance on it if they don't do it, and they would repair it. Same thing with the push button on a crosswalk. If it didn't work, I would assume that they would call someone and repair it. Now, I know there's money in the line item to repair cross, crosslights. I mean, we have a light, we have a, we have money in the budget for maintenance of facilities and so forth. I would assume that our DPW also maintains crosswalks and there's a line item in there. I think if I'm not speaking correctly, that's maybe what you were looking for.
Or if, yes, or if the response was, actually, it's gonna cost a substantial amount of money to repair certain lights or it gets expensive to, to have something before us to decide whether, to get that ball rolling. I, in fact, I assumed it was gonna be part of the capital projects that we were presented with in the spring. That not having been done, we were not able to vote on it. And in fact, I was shocked that only after, I think I inquired about it in March, that the, we got the reports, at least on the inspection, just to figure out, to verify the status of it. So I, again, I was just trying to find out if there is any progress. Is it something that can be repaired within the existing budget or is it something that requires additional funds?
I, I think it depends, and, you know, I'm not aware if, if a red light, if a traffic signal does get broken and it gets repaired, I'm usually not aware of it. It just happens. And so I, I think the idea of having them re-inspected before school starts is a great idea. And we can do that and identify, go back and look at the original reports and see what deficiencies have been addressed, what need to be addressed, what the costs associated with that is, is fine. But when we went to the capital planning process, it wasn't identified as a department priority. I don't, I don't know that, I don't know that cumulatively, you know, each individual deficiency rises to the level of, with all the other needs we have as a collective priority. And again, I would, I'd have to go back and look at the reports on that, but it didn't. When we looked at it through the inspections, it didn't rise to the level of, we need to, we need to defer something else that's been needed for years to do this because it is an epic public safety crisis. I didn't get the sense cumulatively that the traffic signals were in that bad a shape. We can go back and look at it, though.
We'll talk more about it tomorrow. I, this is a pretty simple thing to do. The signals actually, as far as I'm concerned, should be inspected a minimum every month, just for functionality. I mean, it's, it's a, it should be a task and goal. It's reoccurring, comes up, and it's an inspection. You just go out and do it. It's, and you're right, at your level, I would doubt very much if you'd even know what's taking place. I would doubt very much if you can tell me if they're, if they're functioning at this point. But I do think as a point, Alex, that you brought up, it's a point that we can drill down on as you as a manager and say, is this inspection being done once a month, and do you give me assurances it's being done?
We do not have the manpower to do that.
Well, it just, I can inspect them in about a half hour, Steven. It's just press a button.
Especially during the summertime where all of our employee, all of our engineering department employees are in the field overseeing our construction projects.
Okay, I can't, I, I could not openly expect that to be a valid answer because I could even have the janitors go out and inspect these. It's push the button, see if the lights work. That's all it is. If it's a work order, then it goes in by school dude and they can fix them. Matter of fact, I'm not so sure the janitors shouldn't check the things, if a, a person or the crossing guards. Somebody can be assigned that responsibility to check these things. This is a critical safety feature for our community, crossing signals. And if, if, and we gotta track history now. If they're not working and we have a major incident, you know tort liability, we're hanging loose on this unless we have a policy in place that does the inspections on appropriate thing and schedules the funds because we can push money any way we need it. But I wouldn't minimize the crossing signals. There's a great deal of importance put on the crossing signals.
I don't think anybody's arguing that point.
Right. Marie?
I think we're all in agreement that they should be inspected before school starts. That's the month of August, and the town manager's agreed to follow through on that. I think a lot of things that you saw in that report, it was discussion on where we need to enhance and make additions to our crossing walks. And that's something that I think will evolve over time, and it has to be. Maybe this complete streets will help us decide where we need to make changes in our crossing lights. But right now, I think the inspection before school starts makes a lot of sense.
Go ahead, Mark.
Yeah, clearly inspection makes a lot of sense, but, you know, the crossing, crossing lights aren't, shouldn't be significantly different from traffic lights or from streetlights. And we don't expect the DPW to be driving around all night saying the street light is out when traffic lights go out either. I think we depend upon people who identify that there's a deficiency to report that. And then it's the, you know, it's, it's, it's the requirement of the DPW that they go out and repair them in a, in a timely manner. Now, we can certainly do some, some checks, but, you know, I think it would be sufficient for me if there was an identification of who's responsible on a monthly basis for checking crossing signals. And again, it could be, you know, if there's a crossing guard, the crossing guard, I would assume, reports when their signals are out. The signals I saw were probably the ones that don't have crossing guards at them, and we just have to identify who goes out and does that.
Mark, that's not necessarily true because citizens have reported to me that they reported more than one occasion, specific traffic light...
That's a whole different issue, Paul.
Well, no, it's not because you're saying you depend on people. Listen, is traffic lights and, and street lights and crossing lights are, are public safety issues, are they not?
Right.
Okay, so under the auspices of the public safety complex, it's not, it shouldn't be that difficult to have someone go out, push a button once a month. Or once every other month. Give me something other than...
I hear you, but in fact, what you're doing is you're pushing four buttons because you gotta push the button on every corner. That's right. No, but it's... No, but it's...
We have a $55 million budget.
I hear you.
Yeah. We... Yeah, we'll... This is a not...
I hear you.
This is a no-brainer. We check our water residuals every single day of the year. So, this is a safety. It's a safety. Stephen, it's likely being taken care of, and you're just not aware of it. And if it's not, I'm sure you'll have it taken care of, because it's a routine maintenance type thing. Okay. I don't know how we...
There is one more subcommittee.
There is one more subcommittee, yes.
Mark, do you want to give that one out?
No, go ahead, Paul.
Okay, we met last Monday with Paul Postodzik. Our goal was looking at the debt policy and budget format, and when we schedule our next meeting, Paul's going to bring some suggestions back to us. We'll discuss those and then bring them to the board. How's that?
Good.
Okay.
No controversy? That was good. Okay.
There will be controversy, just not right now.
Yeah, we... Action items, I think the action items in the next meeting, well, we're going to have a special meeting, but the next actual meeting, we're going to have a representation, or they're going to be before us again, or we'll delay them.
They said they would have a representative from, I think...
AstroTurf Corporation.
AstroTurf. Thank you.
Right. We're not sure we'll be able to get it up, but we want to see what comments we get back to the board.
Yeah, I mean, to go back to that, if I heard the conversation correctly, I truthfully think getting some independent information from other communities is better before... I mean, the AstroTurf people are going to come in here and tell you how great AstroTurf is. I don't see... I mean, you can question them, but they're going to... That guy probably goes to public meetings for a living. So, I would say, let's talk to our colleagues in government in the other communities and find out what their practical experience has been, and that may take a couple of weeks to get that information together.
Paul's in your court.
Well, I think I was going to get questions from all of you.
Right, yeah.
Plus the towns you wanted me to ask, because I don't... I don't want to get too... Well, you asked that town, but it wasn't... That's not really comparable to what we're trying to do. So, I want... Because the source of the information I know is important to the board, so I want to make sure that I'm asking the right questions to the right people that are on that list of 20 communities that have these things already to figure out how do they get the answers.
Right. And well, it's tip to your hat.